This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
And Witt. Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
Please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Anyone wishing to speak at the first call public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at the final call public invited to be heard on any of the items at the end of the meeting. Next, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is from November 7, 2011, the organization meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mayor Coombs, I would move that we approve the minutes of the organizational meeting of November 7.
All right, let's vote. It passes unanimously. We also have the November 8 city council meeting to approve. It was a regular session, 2008. Do we have any corrections to those? Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I was not in attendance at this meeting, so therefore I'm not really able to vote yea or nay. And council rules and procedures say I have to vote, and I'm not allowed to abstain, so I think I'll just walk away from the desk maybe while you guys vote.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move the November 8, 2011 regular session minutes.
All right, let's vote. All right, it passes six to nothing with Councilmember Levison absent. Gordon, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Mayor and council, the city clerk handed out a matrix for you tonight that pertains to the city council liaison history. It's for item 11D, and it's time that we bring that item up, she will discuss that with you. And I have no other corrections or additions for your agenda tonight. I do have two short reports that I'd like to have under the next item.
All right.
And in the first case, Bobby King would like to update the city council on the recruitment for the city manager project.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. Bobby King, Chief Human Resources Officer for the city. Good evening.
Good evening.
There was an article in The Times call regarding the next steps in the process. There's also been an email communication to all of you in terms of that. As far as timeline, we have an exec session planned for December 20th with Bob Slaven, Slaven, management consultant out of Atlanta, to go through the process with you in terms of the next steps. In addition, we've tentatively scheduled interviews for finalists for January 19th and 20th with more than likely candidates coming into town on the 19th and full of interviews on the 20th. So with that, we're going to entertain questions that you have at this point, if there are any.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Not a question, but more of a clarification. I thought we got an email that on January 20th, we're supposed to have a team building session and a dinner. Is there a conflict there?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Samori have spoken, and that conflict has been rectified.
In favor of the more important thing that you have on your agenda.
The team building.
There are no questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bobby.
And Mayor, Dale Radamaker will make a short presentation regarding our next steps on the oil and gas information education process that we're involved with.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. At your November 15 study session, you directed staff to bring together and coordinate a super committee meeting of several advisory boards, including the Environmental Affairs Board, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Water Board. You also included in that direction the Planning and Zoning Commission. And staff is here tonight to seek additional direction from you specifically with regards to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We advise against having the Planning and Zoning Commission attend that super committee meeting primarily because according to the municipal code, they are the decision-making body for a conditional use site plan, which is what an oil and gas application for a consolidated site would be. And we believe in that quasi judicial capacity that in order to provide for a due process and safeguards, that it's best that Planning and Zoning is not in attendance at that particular meeting. Alternatively, we believe it would be appropriate and helpful for the Planning and Zoning Commission to view the video from the November 15 meeting because we do think there was some good information provided through those presentations. We also believe that the other boards are, it will be very educational for them to receive that similar presentations. And so to that end, we have been working and have tentatively arrived at a date of December 7, which is next Wednesday, to hold that super committee meeting. It would be held at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. We have notified each of the other three advisory boards, Water Board, Planning and Zoning, and Board of Environmental Affairs, to hold that date open on their calendars, but not P and Z. We have not notified them. Again, pending your clarification of your direction tonight. We have also confirmed with each of the speakers that they are both willing and available to make their presentations and also to be available to answer questions from the advisory board members. We would intend that this would be a public meeting, that the public would be invited to attend and observe, but not necessarily to have an additional public invited to be heard section to the meeting. So we are tonight looking to confirm with you that change in direction specifically with regards to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have also invited an additional speaker. His name is Mr. Wes Wilson, who is a retired EPA environmental engineer, had about 35 years experience with the EPA. He does have a different perspective, if you will, on oil and gas exploration, and I believe he would also provide some healthy information for people to, at least hear and understand. We have also inquired and invited him to present to you briefly at your December 20th meeting, when we're intending to come back and answer the questions that you had from November 15. So if you could give us that direction with regard specifically with regards to the P and Z issue, that would be very helpful. We will send out a public notice in the morning, again pending your direction tonight.
Councilmember Witt?
I would like to move that we omit planning and zoning from this meeting.
Okay, we've got first and second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bagley?
Actually, I'm on.
Excuse me. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to know if members of the Planning and Zoning Commission choose to attend this super committee meeting even though they're not part of the super committee, is that considered an ex parte communication? Just as if, you know, we did not accept formally into the record those materials that were presented to us at our desks by various speakers? So when you're... So when you're talking about including the tape of the 15th meeting, are you also going to include those materials that were given to us by members of public as part of public invited-to-be-heard testimony? Or do we need to make a motion to formally accept those items into the record as part of the evidence, just like what was presented to us by the speakers that were on the agenda?
I'll defer that question over to our city attorney.
Mayor and Councilmember Levison, Eugene May, city attorney. While the Planning and Zoning Commission currently isn't acting in its quasi-judicial role because no application's been received yet, I think staff's concern is the potential for discussion about the upcoming consolidated wellsite conditional use site application. And so, given that risk, I think that's why we had the advice not to include them in the supercommittee meeting. So no, I don't think technically those would be considered ex parte communications at this point.
Because they do have a right, like any other public citizen, you know, First Amendment right to, you know, listen to anything they want to listen to or whatever, so, you know, wouldn't taint their judgment one way or another, or if they had other information that they received in a public format, like that supercommittee meeting, they can be in the audience, and that would not disqualify them from anything when they sit as members of the quasi-judicial decision-making body.
It's hard to generalize at this point. I think based on the discussion that I heard at the council meeting on November 15, there was certainly specific interest about that their operations, top operating's operations, and that's the concern that we have. And so while we wouldn't want to sequester them, I think the prudent course is to have them not put in situations where they're to receive that type of information.
And I do fully understand that. I just want to make sure that there's not any tainting of the body because of any other information that's generally -- I mean, they're not a jury.
Correct.
Sequestering is that jury term. And, you know, they do have an ability to read whatever they can in the newspaper, or, you know, when they want to look at our video to follow up on any of those items that were in our packet referred to by the speakers on the 15th. So that wouldn't give them any other information that wasn't normally available to them to educate themselves on the topic.
Right. I mean, all that information would be public record, and certainly part of the layperson citizen board is to bring your life experiences. But then again, you know, quasi-judicial due process requires that you make a decision on the evidence presented at the hearing. And it's that tension between external sources of information and making that decision at the hearing that we're seeking to protect.
And I'm not making any assumptions that any of the Planning and Zoning members would be making any field trips or anything like that. So I know that they're all aware of the constraints of their posts there, so, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I'm a little confused. The whole reason I voted for the supercommittee was if we've got a quasi-judicial body that's going to be making decisions, it's to get the people who make the decisions all the information they need to make that decision. So sequestering the judge doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. May, but my question is, wouldn't it be a whole lot easier just to turn it into a formal P&amp;Z meeting and put it on the record so it's no longer ex parte? Just do a P&amp;Z meeting, remove the formalities of the meeting, and just go nuts? It doesn't -- I mean, that's what I'm saying. There might not be an application, but that way it's not ex parte, it's on the record. And then, I mean, because what we're going to have to do anyway is if P&amp;Z is going to get all the information, both for and against, they're going to have to come to the P&amp;Z meeting anyway, wouldn't they? Who's "they"? Meaning what I'm saying is that you've got all this -- you've got various opinions, data, facts, et cetera, about the issue of fracking. And so the whole point of educating the boards on what we're hearing is so that the various boards can come back to council and give us their opinion and input. And the biggest decision-maker is the P&amp;Z board. And so my concern would be if we sequester them, as you're suggesting, how do we get them the information to give us a good decision? So the solution I'm suggesting is, why don't we just make it an official P&amp;Z meeting, get it on the record? That way, they can all get the information, both for and against, and we're all back to a level playing field, and we can go forward.
So there's a couple of nuances in there. You know, one of the due process safeguards is against pre-decisional judgments. And so if we are providing information before an application is received, before the quasi-judicial proceeding is commenced, and opinions are expressed or formed prior to that application being received, that could also undermine the integrity of the quasi-judicial process. And I'm not saying sequester them, but to make sure that the format in which they receive the information doesn't taint the quasi-judicial process.
Do we want to wait then until an application is received? So that way, everybody can get -- and I just don't want people to keep coming back and back and back. I just want to slug it out.
So slugging it out before an application is received.
Doesn't make much sense, does it?
Doesn't make a lot of sense for the P&amp;Z's role as the decision-maker on conditional use applications. Certainly, I think there's value in educating the advisory boards so that they can fulfill their purposes under the municipal code to advise city council on matters within their purview.
So would we -- so we would do this again specifically for P&amp;Z once an application has been received?
I'm not sure exactly what the process would be. They can certainly view the video from the city council presentation, and that would provide a baseline of information. If they have follow-up questions of a general nature, I think we could respond to those and get them that information. What I'm concerned about are discussions about top operating's current activities or future plans.
Yeah, I don't know what to do, but those are my concerns.
Councilmember Witt.
As I understand it, we're kind of going to be making decisions on different levels. So we have to make a decision on what to do with the property that we own, and we have the mineral rights for, and then we have -- so we have several different levels of decisions to make. And I believe how this makes sense to me is that boards and commissions will have the information that they need for one set of decisions. P&amp;Z is going to be talking about something specific, and this is more general. That's how it makes sense to me.
Councilmember Levison.
Before I speak for a second time, I just want to check in with everybody who hasn't spoken yet to make sure that that's fine.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
I guess I agree with Councilmember Witt in many regards. I do think there has to be caution about getting too specific. But in general, even when we went jointly with the Weld County Commissioners, we were at this stage where we basically had no regulation whatsoever. And so, you know, we had some regulation, but it may be that the beginnings of these discussions is going to send us in a direction to make new ordinances and regulation. And so for that reason, it's pretty hard to assume that Planning and Zoning is going to have no information whatsoever on making judgments to rate the items in the comprehensive plan, which are sometimes not clear, against various criteria for their site plan decisions and that sort of thing, when it is regarding a new issue that we've never encountered in modern times, if you will, to do something quite a bit different than we have been doing. I know we've had, you know, other drilling operations, but it doesn't seem that it's this kind of a scale, and certainly it hasn't been with that many wells and other items. So the other part of the supercommittee idea was so that each committee is operating in a silo right now, and it's very difficult when you're in an advisory capacity in a hearing situation where you might have an individual from another committee bring testimony that says the Parks and Rec Board in their silo decided this thing about this matter. And whether or not that can be taken into, you know, the testimony only on the night, or there can't be any discussion back and forth at the Planning and Zoning meeting. And when everybody has different silos for those committees, then it's real difficult for those questions to be asked by Planning and Zoning members when that's not really their purview, to ask about the environmental issues or about some of the other open space policy and parks policy that the Parks and Rec Board does. So the idea is the secret committee is everybody gets in to one room and asks any question that breaks down the silos, and so that people understand, because I already see that we might have conflicting advice from different citizen boards on various parts of this process and issue. So I was just trying to figure out if we can break down some silos. And I'm not sure if there is a way to construct the information such that information is presented that has nothing at all to do about a specific operator, because you could always make an inference that anybody talking about drilling for natural gas or oil, that that can be inferred, there's some, even a discussion of methodology that an operator might use could be inferred to be violating that quasi-judicial aspect, which seems like it's taking it to a very big extreme.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If I'm not mistaken, whenever this application comes before Planning and Zoning, usually the boards and commissions have seen some instance of it, and recommendations that usually are sent from those boards and commissions to council are also addressed in Planning and Zoning.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos, there are different processes where the advisory boards, some of their reports do make it over to Planning and Zoning, but their charter is typically directed to the council. But certainly in their minutes, when they are taking motions and making recommendations, that information would, of course, be available to Planning and Zoning.
Right. And it would seem on a topic of this nature that when Planning and Zoning were to see whoever's coming, when an application's coming, that it might be prudent for those boards and commissions to send their minutes regarding this to Planning and Zoning, still keeping with the quasi-judicial proceeding, which, when we voted on this last week, or a couple weeks ago, excuse me, didn't dawn on me about the quasi-judicial proceeding of Planning and Zoning. And now that it has come up, there are -- you know, I understand the need for them to -- the Planning and Zoning Commission to receive the information at that meeting, whether or not they've gotten outside information, for they saw a movie, they read this letter, they saw this document, what have you. Their job at that particular meeting of Planning and Zoning is to base judgment on the information that is given to them at that meeting. Having that done beforehand at a supercommittee meeting seems to tear down the quasi-judicial proceeding. So in that case, you know, why seconded the motion is to keep the spirit of quasi-judicial with Planning and Zoning intact. In fact, at the last Planning and Zoning meeting, this topic did come up, and staff recommended that if they are contacted regarding drilling operations and whoever, you know, basically not to answer, that they will be seeing this in a quasi-judicial form and, pardon me, direct everything to staff. So it seems reasonable. I do like -- I did have some concerns with getting all the boards together. However, if we're going to, you know, knock this out with one swoop, or at least try to knock it out with one swoop, getting all the boards and commissions outside of Planning and Zoning together, that's fine. So it seems reasonable that we remove Planning and Zoning because of their status as the -- in their quasi-judicial form.
All right, should we vote on it? Okay, well, passed unanimously. Councilwoman Levison.
Yes. Dale, do you know whether or not the Longmont Channel Public Access will be -- I'm assuming the meeting will be in council chambers, is it going to be an opportunity to have that videotaped and broadcast?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, I don't know, but we'll certainly look into that, and if we can, we will.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, that concludes my report. And under your next item, the special reports, Molly Costalecki will introduce this item, and it pertains also to an action item 9L that you'll take up later in your consent agenda.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Molly Costalecki. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you Mary Donovan, who is serving as the Investment Portfolio Advisor for the city. That is a different name than what you see in the agenda item, but tonight you'll be meeting Mary Donovan. Ms. Donovan will be providing the city with a brief update on the recent economic events and the current investment climate, and she'll also discuss the purpose for the resolution that's later on in your consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Mary Donovan. I'm a director and portfolio manager with Cutwater Asset Management. We've been serving as the city of Longmont's investment advisor for a number of years. We work with the city to manage the portfolio within the confines of state statute as well as the city's approved investment policy. The investment policy and state statute does require that instrumentality securities, in order to be eligible for purchase, be rated in the top rating category by at least two rating agencies and not less than that by any, which fortunately with the downgrade of the U.S. Treasury on August 5, and the ancillary agencies and instrumentalities which followed with the downgrade the next week, that asset class is effectively no longer available for the city of Longmont for investment under the current language of the investment policy. The state statute does allow for the authorization of the purchase of instrumentality securities that carry a credit rating less than AAA if they comply with the guidelines prescribed for the purchase of corporate debt. Okay? So the investment policy that you have in front of you tonight has been redlined to include language which will allow the city of Longmont to purchase instrumentality securities within these guidelines. And those guidelines are that the securities will have no more than a three-year final maturity, and the credit ratings will be at least AA- and AA3 by at least two rating agencies and not less than that by any. Furthermore, diversification guidelines are written in to limit the overall allocation in the portfolio to this whole asset class of 75%, with no more than 30% per any one issuer. So this is perhaps best viewed as a temporary fix for the investment policy. There is widespread expectation that state statute will be revised as we move into the new year. Language has already been drafted, which was intended to remove that AAA requirement for instrumentality securities. It is not the intention of Cutwater to limit the city's investment ability to a three-year horizon for instrumentality securities. Investments in Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, those types of investments, have been the mainstay of public sector portfolios for many years, and as those state statute changes are ultimately made, we very well may come back to you with further policy considerations. It's important for us to, however, move forward with this temporary fix because we're operating in a very challenging investment environment. The Federal Reserve has had interest rates at exceptionally low levels now for a relatively extended period of time. Since December of 2008, they've had the Fed Fund's target rate held between 0 and .25%. So in this environment of a very low interest rate reality, we need to have the ability to look at instrumentality securities for the portfolio in order to maintain a fully invested portfolio and try to maximize interest earnings on the portfolio within the confines of safety and liquidity as prescribed in the city's investment policy. So that is the gist of what I wanted to communicate with you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have with respect to that.
Councilmember Levison?
I just, you know, follow a lot of the European Zone Economic Policy through The Economist, and there's quite a bit of concern about the writing down of Eurozone debt with additional securitization. And I know that one of the items is that we can purchase World Bank securities, but with that kind of insecurity in the Eurozone market, and maybe some talk about certain countries leaving the currency, what kind of risk do we still expose ourselves to having a little bit less of that top-rated securities we would buy? Because, again, people think that a lot of the bundling has gone on in Europe like it went on in the United States, but we just have, that has not been totally exposed yet. So, I'm just wondering how we're gonna balance those kind of credit ratings with the world, the global financial market, especially with the Eurozone, and downgrading what we're gonna buy for investments.
Right, well, you make a very good point with respect to the World Bank, and although that is a specifically authorized instrumentality in the investment policy, that is not, that is not a name that trades frequently in the marketplace, and it's not something that we would typically be looking at for the portfolio. It's definitely an exception item and would be used in a very, I mean, really, very, very infrequently. With respect to the instrumentalities in general, this, the Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac continue to be in conservatorship with the US government, where they've been since the fall of '08. The ties between the federal government and the instrumentalities, I think, are stronger than frankly they've really ever been. That implied guarantee is well in place and in effect, and we're seeing that with respect to the spreads between treasuries and agency securities, which are in general really very narrow and tight at this point. So, I hear what you're saying with respect to the World Bank. I would assure you that that would never be a significant portion of the portfolio. Our overall allocation to the World Bank in the customized asset management portfolios that we manage in Denver is essentially nil at this point. We're very sensitive to what's going on in Europe. We work with a credit team from our parent company in New York, and we have a whole group of people who have dedicated their, essentially their professional careers to credit analysis, and they keep us very well informed with respect to considerations that we would have, particularly with commercial paper issuers. That would be an area that we would also be very sensitive to with any kind of European exposure. We're really, you know, we're completely focused on managing public sector funds, and we are not in the business of taking any exceptional risk, it's just, it's just not the way that we operate. So, we're definitely looking at this in a very conservative fashion, and that's the way that we've always managed public funds.
I guess there's no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
The first person on the list for publicly invited to be heard is Chris Porzinski.
Mayor and City Council, Chris Porzinski, we'll get it sooner, later. 12624 Weld County Road, 1. Here to talk about fracking again. And I really just wanted to share my personal experience, since I've heard about this about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and it's kinda turned my life upside down, because I wanna educate myself and find out what's going on. And the more I'm digging and the more I'm learning, the scarier it gets about this industry and the oversight that I'm seeing from the industry, and the regulations that are in place. And with all that being said, this being 350 feet from my backyard, or excuse me, my back door, let me rephrase that, my back door, 16 wells, and then sitting yesterday and listening to Dell Brunns go around Union and Reservoir and go, "I wanna drill here, I wanna drill here, I wanna drill here, I wanna drill here, and I wanna drill here", it scared the crap out of me. Excuse my language. Definitely makes me not wanna live there anymore, if that's what we're gonna do or allow to be done to Union and Reservoir. I realize that the regulations are definitely in their favor, and the laws are written for them right now. And I understand your hands are tied, but it's definitely destroying, I won't say destroying, but it's really changed my life, and how I view the world, and how I view things, and how they're being done in our world today, over the last few weeks. It's changed my life. When I go home, I'm stressed, I have to, I feel obligated to find out as much possible about this, so I can fight this as long as I possibly can to stop this in my backyard. So, I lose sleep, I've lost 10 pounds, don't eat, short-tempered, lack of focus at work, all of the things, and it hasn't even started yet. So, what I'd like to see the city do is try and get together with these, with other cities that don't want this, and form some sort of state coalition, so you can get together with the state. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know anything about these laws, so I'm just throwing this out there, but something's gotta be done, and you guys have a lot more power than I do as an individual. And so, I would love to see some of these cities on this front range get together and come up with some policies, to come up to the state and start saying, "We don't want this in our backyard. We don't want 100 wells wrapped around Union and Reservoir to degrade it over the next decade." Because you look at it, there's 30,000 wells coming to Colorado if we don't do something, and that scares me, what we're doing to our future. So, I just urge you to, don't rush this, and think about it, do your research, find out everything you can about this before we put it through, because I'm really scared about what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Doug Ward. Please repeat your name and address, please.
Doug Ward, 2337 Brandy Court. Mayor Coombs, councilmembers. I moved to Longmont in 1968, and one of the, one of the first things that struck me about the community when I moved here from Boulder, by the way, was to start to observe the kind of decisions that leaders, business leaders, civic leaders, farmers, ranchers had made about the community starting generations ago, that provided the kind of social environment, the kind of economic environment, the kind of environment that I wanted to live in. And if you look at those decisions in terms of acquiring electrical power, if you look at our parks and amenities, and what that means for the social aspects of our community, or if you, if you look at the resource decisions that were made by Ralph Price and Wade Gaddis and others who provided the kind of high-quality water that we have, that we can use sparingly. And so, as I look at those decisions that were made by people who were in a community of about 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 people, it was a farming community at that time, I marvel at the wisdom that they had to look out for a very, very different community in the future, and provide electricity, provide natural resources, and provide social amenities that make the community a great place to live. We're standing 2011, and the community's 50 years from now is gonna be a very different community than it is now. So, it looks like an opportunity now for council, as they consider the Integrated Sustainability Plan, to look out beyond the community that we have today, just as our forebears did when it was a farming and ranching community with a turkey plant and a beet operation. Look out into the future and say, "What can we do to preserve and extend the legacy that our wise forefathers gave us in terms of our social environment, our economic environment, and the quality of the air and water that we have in this community?" So, please, consider that this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Next up, Kim Gibbs.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the council. My name is Kim Gibbs, and I live at 7468 Mount Sherman Road. I spoke to you recently on behalf of the Citizens for Quiet Skies, and I wanna thank you for listening to our concerns. Today, I think we can all take a little break from talking about airplane noise. I'd like to share a story with you about the broader topic of quality of life. Apart from my day job, I own and manage condominiums both here in Colorado and in Florida, near the town where I grew up. As you may recall, in 2008, the foreclosure crisis was in full swing, and as a result, the Florida economy and housing market were completely devastated. My story is about the Belmont condominiums in Zebra Hills, Florida. When I began serving on the HOA Board of Directors in 2009, more than half of the 224 units there were in foreclosure. There was no money to cut the grass, so it was knee-high. Windows were broken or boarded up. The week of Christmas 2009, Progress Energy shut off all the security lights because of a delinquent bill, leaving the neighborhood pitch-black dark. This event prompted a news story. The Fox TV news reporter panned the empty parking lot and described Belmont as a ghost town. Drug trafficking was rampant, and there were used needles on the playground and by the pool. A small group of homeowners, including myself, decided to take charge. First, we created a bare-bones budget and pledged to live within our means, no special assessments. Then, we started an aggressive neighborhood watch program. One day, I stood outside a unit in broad daylight and took photos of people arriving every 15 minutes to buy drugs. We replaced broken windows and removed graffiti. Nuisance issues such as aggressive dogs and excessive noise were promptly addressed. Today, roughly two years later, the Belmont is a thriving and vibrant community. Residents talk about how much they love living there, and describe it as peaceful and quiet. Residents feel safe. They enjoy the sparkling pool and amenities, the fishing, three fishing ponds, walking trails, beautiful landscaping, and abundant open space. The Belmont's success story resulted from providing strong leadership, managing the finances and our affairs with an iron fist, and focusing on quality of life issues. It's not surprising that crime will degrade a community, but it's important to understand that nuisances like excessive noise also have a negative impact. I urge you to take quality of life issues seriously. Your choices will greatly influence the future of Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, we have Joseph Bassman.
Mayor Coombs, members of the city council, I'm Joseph Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle. Thanks for inviting me to speak. The Cougar Land Company and Top Operating Company have approached the Longmont city staff, as we've heard earlier tonight, regarding surveying drilling and hydro fracking on city parks and open space property. I'm pleased to see that the city council is initiating a more thorough study of the issue, even before both applications have been formally submitted. Hopefully, the study will fully consider all sides of the issue. The people in our community will also want to learn about the current and proposed fracking of oil and gas wells on city property and within our city's domain. They will learn that fracking in many other localities has been harmful to the health and the environment of the community. It has been harmful to air quality, to agricultural, to water quality, water quality, water quality and quantity, home values, traffic flows, roads and infrastructure, peace and quiet. They will learn of the successful efforts of many other communities like Pittsburgh to ban fracking within the areas controlled by the city. They will learn that Longmont is a home rule municipality, and has a strong set of state and federal constitutional powers that enable us to protect our rights to a clean and healthy environment. They will learn that these personal rights trump those of regulatory agencies. I expect that the result of an impartial study will be that the city council will want to ban fracking in Longmont. Formal applications are expected soon from Top for a conditional use permit, and from Cougar for Anadarko Oil Surveying. Both proposals will be asking the city to advance the effort of oil and gas corporations to frac our city. Please take your time in responding to these requests. Give the citizens time to learn. Give us time to organize and respond. Take the time to learn how we can assert the right of our city to protect our environment. Give us time by saying no to both proposals. Most importantly, say no to fracking in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, James Kinworthy.
James Kinworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I just ran down here at the last minute to spot off a little bit. I wanna reassure the council that just because the room is not packed tonight, we haven't forgotten you. As a matter of fact, if the old wives' tale about the burning ears were true, your ears would be singed. And we haven't forgot Planning and Zoning either, they're very much on our minds. There was a reason, there are many reasons the room was packed, and one is that this is a vital issue, and I think what I wanna talk about tonight is water. And I've known for a while that Longmont is selling water to the pumpers, drillers, and I find that really disgusting. And I'm gonna make it my business to find out how that came about. I also wanna point out something happened in Bolivia a few years ago. The government of Bolivia sold the water rights to a corporation, and the government of Bolivia was overturned in a revolution. And I had an ex-council member say in my presence a couple years ago, "What do I care what happens in a, some country down in South America?" And I didn't answer her, but the answer is, "The more you know, the better off you are." I got a couple of questions too. Well, no, okay, let me table that. There's gonna be a lot of drilling going on in this part of Colorado, and we need a regional water purification district. You can't take the radiation out of the water, but you can remove some of the chemicals. And guess who gets to pay for the water purification district? That would be the drillers and the pumpers. And I also wanna say a little something about the environment. You keep screwing around, we, we keep screwing around with the environment, and we're all gonna pay. That will happen. There's no way to get around it. We need to clean up our act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Shelley Bassman.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and councilpeople. Thank you for this forum, to come and speak to you about things that concern us very much. What's concerning me very much is the idea, the fracking and oil drilling in Longmont City and on our public property, parks and open space. You know, we're fortunate to have this resource, to have it have been discovered, and to have a way to try, to benefit from it, to bring it up from 8,000 feet below the ground. It's an extremely expensive way to get gas, it's not low-lying crude. And water, in terms of water, each well needs millions of gallons of very pure water, drinking quality water. One of the top partners, speaking at one of the advisory meetings, said that the water in Union was not pure enough to be used in fracking. These millions of gallons are then contaminated, seriously deeply contaminated, with the chemicals that are needed to blast holes in the rock. Half of it comes back up, and it cannot be cleaned by municipal, yeah, the sewage treatment plant. It cannot be treated by municipalities. I understand that there's work going on in Fort Collins researching how to treat this water, but now it cannot be treated. It is dumped down 10,000-foot well out by Fort Lepton. It is removed from the hydrological cycle, it can, we've destroyed it. And it's millions of gallons per well, per fracking, over And it's millions of gallons per well, per fracking over 20 years, and wells are fracked multiple times. I hope that some of this gas, beautiful natural gas, will be available for my children and our grandson and granddaughter, who are six months and two and a half. We currently are exporting the natural gas that is being produced in the United States of America. We are exporting it to the highest bidders in Asia, Europe, and Latin America. We are not using it. We cannot use all of it domestically. I think it is morally incumbent upon us, as long as we have a surplus now, not to drill anymore. And I believe that if the top people were, I'm surprised that they want to add to the glut. I'm disappointed that they want to add to the glut. But Longmont City Council, Longmont is a home-rule city, which means that we can make regulations and rules for the benefit of our citizens and our future generations that trump the oil and gas people in Denver. And to think that one, one, I'm jumping around. Am I finished? There is one inspector for an entire well county up to the Wyoming Valley, or I don't know how further east. To think that one inspector can do 47,000 wells plus however many are in the pipeline now, plus whatever Longmont approves, is, um...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There are no, there are no ordinances for a second reading. Oh, just, did I forget one? Strider, excuse me, Strider.
Sorry, Mayor Coombs. My name is Strider Benson. I, um, have a couple of things left to decide. One thing, it just came out, the secret dispersal of $7 trillion, $700 billion by the Federal Reserve to the six biggest banks in the country. In addition to the TARP bailout, this just came out in the last couple of days. This is bankrupting the country, but the propaganda machine continues to blame the working class, the middle class, and the poor, and to make us pay the bill to fill in the gap, they call it deficit, from the entire economy which they have already stolen. If this isn't dealt with, we won't have anything left to deal with other stuff. Also, presently, the United States Senate is dealing with the bill, which it passed into law, will absolutely destroy all constitutionally guaranteed human rights in this country. It is to give the military the power and the charge to detain without charge and prosecute without evidence and without trial any person anywhere on earth, whether an American citizen right here in Longmont, or anyone anywhere, person, not corporations, and to imprison such person indefinitely, without charge, without trial, and without evidence, permanently. That is being discussed right now. If these types of things continue, we won't have anything left to discuss. Everything will all be taken away. This is exactly what Adolf Hitler did in 1933 in Germany when he took all power under the banner of homeland security. I don't know how I lost all that time. I'm shamelessly lobbying for a seat on the Board of Environmental Affairs. I am studying this issue and have been for many, for a long period of time. And as a member of a recent quasi-judicial commission, I appreciate the command, the parameters of considering only the evidence presented in public hearing. But I would seek to bring forward the best possible and comprehensive evidence researched from the Board of Environmental Affairs to the PNC deliberations. The, I spoke with the Oil and Gas Commissioner after the meeting two weeks ago, and she pointed out that while her talk of the well structure itself was correct, that they have upgraded the technology of the drilling, pumping the 7 million gallons back into each well is what causes the groundwater pollution.
Thank you, Strider. There are no ordinance or second reading, so let's move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, item 9A is ordinance 2011-82. A bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2011. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9B is ordinance 2011-83. A bill for an ordinance admitting the 2011-2015 capital improvement program. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9C has to do with two airport leases. Ordinance 2011-84. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H 32B, the premises, to Frank Caseros, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. And ordinance 2011-85. A bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H 44D, the premises, to David S. Nasser, tenant. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9D is ordinance 2011-86. A bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Hillbrand Annexation, generally located east of Sunset Street and north of Isaac Walton Park, and zoning the property RMD, residential mixed density. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9E is ordinance 2011-87. A bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of a drainage easement and a water line easement, generally located north of Ken Pratt Boulevard and west of Martin Street. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9F is ordinance 2011-88. A bill for an ordinance establishing a charge of 50 cents per month for emergency telephone services, 911, for wired and wireless subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2012. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13th. 9G is ordinance 2011-89. A bill for an ordinance submitting Title 10, Chapter 24, adding a new section 105 regarding trespass on railroad property. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13. 9H is Resolution 2011-90. A bill for an ordinance submitting Chapter 4.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Longmont Sales and Use Tax Appeal Procedures. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13. Item 9I is ordinance 2011-91. A bill for an ordinance submitting Chapter 6.08 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Longmont Sales and Use Tax Licenses. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13. 9J is ordinance 2011-92. A bill for an ordinance submitting Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code and adopting amended and restated pension plans. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13. 9K is ordinance 2011-93. A bill for an ordinance submitting Section 3.04.885 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting amended and restated City of Longmont General Employees Retirement Plan and the City of Longmont Money Accumulation Pension Plan for employees of the City of Longmont. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 13. 9L is Resolution 2011-83. This resolution revises your investment policy, as discussed under the special presentation item 6A this morning, earlier this evening. 9M is Resolution 2011-84. This resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District for Eco-Passes. 9N is accept public improvements for Blue Vista Phases 1 and 1C. 9O is accept public improvements for Popular Grove Phases 2 and 3. 9P, accept public improvements for Quail Ridge Replant B. 9Q is appoint members to the Longmont Youth Council for the school year 2011-2012. 9R is approve an outside sanitary sewer tap for 1905 Third Avenue. And 9S is request to suspend your council rule procedure 25 and move your second regular meeting for December from the 27th to December 20th. And Mayor, I don't need to remove any for discussion purposes?
Are there any items that the council wants to remove from the consent agenda? Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to make a declaration to the council members that on item Q, I actually have a family member who's on the youth council currently, but she's not going to be reappointed or appointed with our, our vote. So I'm just checking in to make sure it's okay if I, if I vote on that item still.
Councilmember Bagley.
I, I just have some questions over the new trespassing ordinance with the railroad tracks. So can I pull that, please?
Which one's that, which letter?
G. Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If there are no others, I would move the consent agenda minus 9G.
All right. Shall we vote? Pass this unanimously? And Mayor Council, we have Commander Craig Earhart here this evening that can answer questions as well as the city attorney on this item. Councilmember Bagley.
Just, I guess my, I understand the intent of the ordinance, but, and, and of course, I don't want kids or people playing on railroad tracks, but my reading of the ordinance is that we are essentially taking a line and literally just drawing it across Longmont. And technically, if you adhere strictly to what the new law will say, the only way you can go from, you know, one side of Longmont to the other is if we go to a street and cross. Am I reading that right? We technically can't cross the railroad tracks unless we are at a city street. So if we are all going to be law-abiding citizens, we are putting a wall through Longmont. Am I reading that right?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, that is correct. In the strictest reading of the ordinance, that is what it says, that there is no trespassing allowed on any type of railroad, right-of-way, siding, or property. However, it is in our intent in the Longmont Police Department to enforce those types of, you know, where somebody's just crossing the railroad track to get, let's say on Atwood, to cross the railroad track to see their neighbor, talk to their neighbor. This is, the intent of this ordinance is to ensure public safety and to enforce violations where public safety is in danger or there's illegal activity going on in the railroad properties.
And I, I would feel more comfortable with the ordinance if it's, I mean, if we specifically made allowance for that, because my profession, at some point down the road, I'm going to be sitting there with a city prosecutor, and someone's going to get a ticket for crossing those railroad tracks, and I'm going to go, God, I remember that meeting. That wasn't the intent. And the prosecutor's going to go, I don't care. The law says you're not supposed to be on the railroad tracks, even for an instant. And so basically, if you guys want to throw a wall up in Longmont, if we don't change something in it that says that people are allowed to maybe go on, but not, I mean, they can go on but not remain, that would make sense, but the way the law is written, nobody can go on or cross railroad tracks in Longmont unless they're at a street. And I just don't think that's realistic. Let's make a law that basically says what we intend. That, that, that's my only concern.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I get that, that thinking, Councilmember Bagley, but it's also like the 55, 50 mi, 55 mile an hour speed limit. Now, I'll say that I've gone over 55 miles an hour before, and it's usually officer discretion. So I would see this more as officer, officer discretion, as far as whether to ticket somebody for going at, at, like at, at Atwood to cross this, to cross the railroad tracks to see their neighbor. You know, there is some discretion of whether or not there, someone is actually playing on the track itself or trying to jump a train, and that's, that's probably easier to see with officers, officer discretion than somebody just trying to cross, cross it, just to cross it. I, I get that, that thinking, but I, I believe, like, like any ordinance or any laws that we have, as far as when it comes to public safety, there is, there is that amount of officer discretion.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I love you, Councilman Santos. However, the law doesn't make room for officer discretion, meaning that if we're going to have a law that says we can't go on the railroad tracks, that is the law, period. And hold them out, I mean, I appreciate our fine police force. Love y'all, do a great job, but putting, literally putting a wall through Longmont. If we, if we intend people not to jump trains, let's say, don't jump trains. If we intend people to be able to cross the tracks to see their neighbor, let's put that in. If the law is 55 miles an hour, let's don't speed. But I, I've just got concerns, and I know it's only first reading, but I, I'd want to see some of those concerns addressed in order for me to vote for the ordinance.
Mayor, if I could just make an observation. Seems like if you're getting ready to adopt an ordinance that says that if you're on someone else's property without permission, it's called trespass, it's pretty hard to say that we have trespass for certain things on private property that somebody who owns that property does not want you on, and then say, oh, it's all right otherwise. I think that we're going to have a real serious problem, and I'm getting in over my head legally, but I, I'm having trouble reconciling something that says we'll selectively decide what's trespass at the time that we see it or don't see it.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wasn't actually going to pull this off, but I had some similar concerns to Councilmember Bagley, and also experience with a neighborhood project at Athan Atwood, where we got the, the railroad's permission to beautify that area where there's a pedestrian, I think it's a legal pedestrian crossing there at, at Athan Atwood. So, you know, technically, if the neighborhood decides to replant some of the irises that have died off, this ordinance would make it, you know, we would be in violation of this ordinance, even though it would be continuing a project that was established maybe seven years ago. And, I mean, you know, when my kids were small, we did a cleanup, green-up project, walking the tracks from 4th until 9th Avenue, you know, with my children, who were very small, picking up trash. So we couldn't even do, there couldn't even be a cleanup, green-up project to clean trash off the railroad track. So the railroad doesn't do that maintenance, so how would we deal with those issues of, you know, trash and, and maybe objects that don't belong in the right-of-way of the, the railroad? Do we call the police or call code enforcement to come and clean up things? I mean, that's a, that's just a question, because, you know, people with the railroad tracks running through their neighborhood do take care to pick up trash, and so if you cross that invisible line and you're doing a, you know, a public good by picking up a piece of trash, then, you know, are you in violation?
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Levinson, there is provision within the ordinance to allow lawful entry into, based on permission from the railroad companies. So that would be Burlington Northern, I believe, in this case, could allow that beautification or permission to clean up trash and so forth, but the permission would have to be granted by them ahead of time. From what I'm hearing, though, from council, perhaps we can go back to the city attorney's office and rewrite the ordinance. office and rewrite the ordinance.
I mean, I think it just needs a little bit of tweaking to allow, I mean, I just remember one year, we were down in that kind of no-man's land where the railroad owes quite a swatch of right-of-way on either side of the tracks, and we got hazardous materials such as old propane canisters out of there that we had to call code enforcement to remove because we didn't want people touching them or anything. And it really, I think, cuts down on some goodwill that neighbors want to do when the railroad doesn't take care of the property. Certain parts of town, they're, I think they're easements are ten or fifteen feet from the tracks or more. So, you know, it gets to be balancing kind of the disorder hazard of having trash in no-man's land, or neighbors, you know, taking some incentive during cleanup, green-up weeks to be able to do that. And you may not even be within, you know, stepping distance of the track itself, but you might still technically be on their right-of-way. So I don't, you know, again, if there's some way we can tweak it to resolve that, to, you know, allow something like that, even city workers would be in violation if they went and saw something they knew was hazardous and picked it up due to a public safety concern.
Councilmember Samari?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the major difference that I see between trespassing on someone's property and crossing the tracks is that in some instances, the only way you can get to the other side is by crossing the tracks. So you'd constantly be trespassing. And I agree with Councilman Bagley that if it was reworded in some way, that would eliminate the fear of being caught trespassing. I know you're a nice guy, but the next cop may not be as nice as you are, or twenty years from now, they may not be as nice as you are today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm looking at this ordinance, wondering if you just took out the word "enter" on A and say, "No person shall, without lawful authority or the railroad company's consent, remain unlawfully on railroad property," rather than "enter and remain." I think that would, that would make me feel better.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. No, that's actually a very good point, Councilmember Finley. It might be that we just, you know, Craig, we just let you have this back, so we don't kill it, and we just move to, you know, I'm sorry, I was going to say just postpone it so you can reword, which you need to reword after hearing the discussion with council, and then potentially bring it back at a later date. Apparently, Councilmember Bagley has another question.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Actually, a statement. What if we were to actually just put, you actually said it, it says, "Enter or remain unlawfully." What if we were just to say, "Enter and remain upon railroad property"? That way, if somebody enters but doesn't remain, you can cross, and if you enter and remain, you're trespassing. I, I mean, you're the expert, Mr. May.
I defer to the city attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's page one fifty-nine, line...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Take out unlawfully.
So enter, and then change "or" to "and," and take out "unlawfully." So it would just read, "Enter and remain upon railroad property."
Mayor and council, you know, I would check with my prosecutor. I think it'd be ambiguous as to the timeframe that "remain" applies to. I mean, if you enter and walk across, you are on that property for a period of time.
Enter and remain for five Mississippi. No, but that's the idea. You know, I mean, I...
I think council's getting into a very difficult area to regulate the intent in somebody's mind to beautify, put roses on the track, to go visit my neighbor, to pick up things which I consider trash. You know, I'm not seeing a way of capturing that in a ordinance.
I have, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I have faith in you, Mr. May.
And Mayor, my suggestion would be that doing it on the fly isn't going to work. If you take no action on it tonight, on first reading, then it dies, and it will return to you when the city attorney and our team feels like we have an ordinance that is worthy of coming to you for consideration.
All right. That's what we should do.
All right.
If you don't act on it first reading, it's not going on second reading, so we will return
at such time as we see that we have an ordinance that you should consider.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just, again, I just want this as a reflection that we're not interested in this ordinance. It's just that perhaps it just needs a little bit more tweaking, so, you know, yeah, let's not act on this and let staff bring it back. Thanks, Craig.
Yeah. Let's take a ten-minute break. Mayor Council, this first item will be introduced by Kathy Fedler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, CDBG and Affordable Housing Programs Coordinator. At the May twenty-fourth council meeting, staff was directed to bring back a list of applicants from several specific categories for council selection and appointment to form a workforce housing task force to look at establishing a new affordable housing program to replace the inclusionary zoning program, if in fact such a program is necessary. So the task force would be reviewing and analyzing the need for both affordable rental and owner units in Longmont, and provide recommendations to city council on how best to meet any needs that they find as a result of their analysis. Staff did present potential applicants to council at the August ninth meeting, and was asked to reopen the application process, to do some direct solicitation of applicants in certain specific categories, and some categories were added at that point in time. We brought those back at September twenty-seventh, and again, we were asked to reopen the process to seek additional representatives from the business community and from Planning and Zoning Commission. We did send out an email blast to over two hundred and forty chamber members, and solicited from P&amp;Z again, and we received six additional applications, three from the business community, and two from Boulder County Housing and Human Services, and one from P&amp;Z. So I did include a summary of the applicants, as well as, I think you got copies of all the applications. If members were appointed in the numbers that were agreed upon prior, in previous council meetings, there would be a task force, actually, of twenty-three members. I just added it up, and I made a math error. So it'd be twenty-three total numbers if all of these are appointed in the numbers that were originally agreed upon. Also, attached to your communication was a summary of what the group would be looking at, the process that would be used. It's kind of loose at this point in time, because it will kind of depend on what analysis the group comes up with. We did also receive permission at the August ninth meeting to go and use outside consultant to compile the housing, employment, and labor force data that the task force would need to undertake its analysis, and we will be using inside or city staff facilitators to manage the overall process. It is estimated that we would need about fifteen to, actually, twenty to twenty-five thousand for the outside consultants to provide the technical information and best practices research at this point in time. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we have Valerie ready to do a voting process, or we can just have discussion.
I've seen no one ready to discuss, we'll go to the voting process.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, you have some ballots at your desk. They were, I believe, placed on the right-hand side for each of the sections that Kathy described in her council communication. The one thing we forgot to do was put your name on the ballot, so as you vote each time, you'll need to write your name at the top for when we read the votes out. So the first category is affordable homeowners, and you need to vote for three of those individuals. It may take a couple of votes, because there are quite a few folks there.
Do we just check three, or do we rank them?
All right. Finley voted for Bunting, Millian Steele, and Amy Pernak. Witt voted for Edith Bunting, Millian, Rebecca Millian Steele, and Amy Pernak. Bagley voted for Edith Bunting, excuse me, Rebecca Millian Steele, and Amy Pernak. Levison voted for Kay Fissinger, Greg Harris, and Carol Mitz. Coombs voted for Kay Fissinger, Ryan Penner, and Amy Pernak. Santos voted for Edith Bunting, Greg Harris and Amy Pernak. And Samori voted for Edith Bunting, Rebecca Millian Steele and Amy Pernak. So it looks like Edith Bunting got five votes, Rebecca Millian Steele got four votes and Amy Pernak got six votes. So those are the three affordable homeowners for the task force. The next area is Boulder County Housing and Human Services reps. You need to vote for two on one ballot and put your name at the top. Okay, Santos voted for Megan Buffington and Kristen Unrain. Levison voted for Megan Buffington and Leslie Irwin. Witt voted for Megan Buffington and Kristen Unrain. Samori voted for Buffington and Unrain. Coombs voted for Buffington and Irwin. Bagley voted for Buffington and Irwin and Finley voted for Buffington and Unrain. So we have seven votes for Megan Buffington, four for Kristen Unrain. So those will be the two. Your next ballot is for business community. You'll need to vote for two on one ballot and put your name at the top, please.
Look for it, Sandy.
Coombs voted for Safi. Does that have Safi? And Pickett. Okay, thanks. Samori voted for Safi and Pickett. Finley voted for Safi and Pickett. Witt voted for Safi and Pickett. Bagley voted for Safi and Pickett. Levison voted for Safi and Omer. And Santos voted for Van Bentham and Pickett. So it looks like Wimper Pickett got six and Safi got six. So those are the two from the business community. Your next one is the lending community. You don't need to vote for two. Okay, for the lending community, Bagley voted for King and Coleman. Samori voted for King and Kittleberger. Levison voted for Coleman and Kittleberger. Coombs voted for King and Kittleberger. Santos voted for Kittleberger and Lee. Finley voted for King and Lee. And Witt voted for King and Kittleberger. Jeff King and Eric Kittleberger both got five votes. Next one is local developer and builders and I think we need to talk with or need to have Kathy talk about this one.
So the intent was to have a nonprofit rental housing developer, a for-profit rental housing developer, which there's one of each in those. So that would be Michael Reese is the nonprofit rental housing and Lori Walker is the for-profit rental housing. And then a nonprofit for-sale housing, which would be Tom Duber from Habitat. And then there's three in the category of for-profit for-sale, which would be Aubrey Additon, David Gregg and Kevin Miller. So I think the only ones we really need to vote on are between those three.
Aubrey, David and Kevin?
Yeah.
I mean, one.
One.
Okay. So it sounds like Tom Duber, Michael Reese and Lori Walker are on the task force because they represent that area. So just vote for one between Aubrey, Additon, I'm sorry, David Gregg and Kevin Miller. Okay, so Coombs voted for Greg. Finley voted for, let's see, cross up that one, Greg. Samori voted for, y'all voted for all of these, so Greg. I gotta see which ones left. Witt voted for Greg. Santos voted for Miller. Bagley voted for Greg. And Levison voted for Miller. So David Gregg got five votes. So that local developer builders will be Tom Duber, David Gregg, Michael Reese and Lori Walker. And then housing and service reps, vote for three of those. Bagley voted for McNeely, Keir and Springer. Coombs voted for McNeely, Keir and Springer. Santos voted for Benjamin McNeely and Keir. Levison voted for Keir, McNeely and Springer. Witt voted for Benjamin McNeely and Keir. And Finley voted for Benjamin, Keir and McNeely. And Samori voted for Benjamin, Keir and McNeely. So Terry Benjamin with four votes and Keir with seven and Andrew McNeely with seven. Next one is Longmont Board and Commissions. We need four representatives. So vote for four of those.
There's only one.
There's only one.
There's only one, what? And which ones are those? And which ones are the planning and zoning ones? Jonathan Singer and who else? Melinda Yale. So vote for either Jonathan or Melinda. So the other three are all in that one? Okay, Bagley voted for, let me find him here, Melinda Yale. Finley voted for Melinda Yale. Witt voted for Melinda Yale. Dennis, oh, sorry, Coombs voted for Jonathan Singer. Santos voted for Melinda Yale. Levison for Jonathan Singer. Samori for Melinda Yale. So Melinda Yale received five votes. Realtors, we need one. Bagley voted for Deanna Dyer. Levison voted for Marty Quigley. Coombs voted for Deanna Dyer. Finley voted for Deanna Dyer. Samori for Deanna Dyer. Santos for Deanna Dyer and Witt for Deanna Dyer. So it looks like Deanna Dyer got seven, six votes. Workforce Boulder County, unless you don't want to appoint Kathy Board, we don't need you to take a vote on it unless you want to change that direction. Okay, because there's only one position, only one person under that. Okay, thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you so much for that. And then the final action I need tonight is whether or not we can use funding from the council contingency fund to hire the outside technical consultants as they are needed. And what we would recommend is 25,000 be set aside and we will try and keep it below that. And anything that we do keep below that, we will return to the contingency fund.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we use our contingency funds as suggested by staff, the 15 to 20,000 for the technical consultant and then the 5,000 to the Center for Housing Policy to provide best practice research, but around 5,000.
Councilman, councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just a quick question. I had the fortunate opportunity to be with wonderful, wonderful executives last week as I got to know our inner workings of our city. My question is, do we need a consultant or would you or Bobby King or Tom back there, would someone be able to facilitate this? Just a question, not a suggestion. Do we have people on staff who are capable of facilitating a discussion for 20 to 23 people or do we need to spend 25,000 to do it?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, so the consultant wouldn't be facilitating the meetings. We are using in-house staff to do that. This is for the technical information, looking at statistics, data, foreclosure information, the whole thing, that we felt really needed to come from an outside consultant so that it isn't perceived as being staff's viewpoint and staff only giving the information we wanted the group to have kind of a thing, but that it would be a very above-board and outside and above-reproach kind of information that would be presented to the task force.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I would only add to what Kathy said. Staff could give you that type of report, but the perception might not be there and we would like to have the perception there. Councilmember Levison.
Yes, Councilmember Bagley, the other advantage to using an outside consultant is that they have been tracking national, regional trends in a way that our staff doesn't have resources to do and they do this for many other municipalities and agencies. So their information is probably going to be really good and spot-on and probably an efficient use of resources considering how much information and data is going to be pulled together. And as an aside, when I was in Phoenix at the National League of Cities meeting, one of the breakout sessions that had the most Colorado people seemed to be the one that the Center for Housing Policy, two of their staff members were presenting around TOD and housing. And there were five or six people there in a room of maybe, I guess 10% of the audience was from Colorado. So, you know, this is already a resource in our state that people are looking to for information just from the attendants in the room.
Okay, another discussion. Shall we vote on the motion? The motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem Santos dissenting.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, this item will be introduced by Cal Youngberg and Ron Shaw and it's the Integrated Sustainability Plan. Oh, I'm sorry. That doesn't look like Cal Youngberg. That looks like Dale.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Rademaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. Tonight, we do have Cal Youngberg and Ron Shaw with us who will make the bulk of the presentation. I just wanted to sort of open it up a little bit and start the discussion tonight. So tonight, what we're coming back to you with is another draft of the Integrated Sustainability Plan that we last discussed with you at your October 10th, 2010 meeting, for those of you who were on council at the time. At that meeting, you directed us to move forward with an initial public involvement effort in order to go to the public and get initial feedback on the overall document. And so what we did with that direction is we initially started out with a work with our advisory boards and we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but that was the initial work. So if we could go ahead and start the slide, let's go with Valerie. Valerie can. So the Integrated Plan is one that was started a number of years ago and the items we want to hit tonight are is to, again, just briefly give you an introduction to it, talk about some of that initial public involvement, talk about how we revised the plan from the one that you looked at back in October 2010, and then talk about what are some potential proposed additional public involvement efforts. And ultimately, and finally, and probably most importantly, to get some direction from the council with regards to those aspects of the plan that you like and those aspects of the plan that you maybe would like to see tweaked or changed a little bit as we go forward. So, you know, what are we trying to achieve with this overall effort? In essence, it's to preserve the past, provide for the future and prosper today, try to learn from our experiences, but keeping in mind the needs of the future generations of our community. I think Mr. Ward spoke to it quite well earlier in your meeting and probably I can't say it any better than he did. I think it's to develop and start using some methods and approaches that provide staff and council with better information to make better decisions with regards to the use of scarce resources, namely our tax dollars and money that the public entrusts to us to do the best with that we can. What we're proposing here and what we're looking at is not new. It is not something that is unique to Longmont. And in fact, we put in your packet some information on some other organizations, namely the American Waterworks Association, their statement of policy. It's on page 428 of your packet. And the interesting information that I think that AWWA, which by the way is sort of the institutional organization that water utilities across the country look to for best practices when operating utilities, it very closely resembles our particular plan. And we didn't mirror our plan after the AWWA, but they are very close. It is looking at trying to operate utilities in a way that integrates the economic, environmental and social development aspects of providing, in this case, you know, a water supply. Following that, right after that is some work that the American Public Works Association is working on. So in our industry, at least in public works and natural So, in our industry, at least in Public Works and Natural Resources, this is sort of the norm. This is what agencies are doing, both public and private, um, in looking at how to ultimately make more informed and better decisions. So, as we, as we look at this, again, in the public works, um, area, uh, we're, we, we have always looked at issues of cost-effectiveness. That's called good engineering. And frankly, if we're not doing that, you should fire us because we're not doing our basic job. In my career, we have also started to look, uh, strongly at environmental issues. Cal Youngberg has made an entire career of that and I think is an expert in the, in the field of environmental science and environmental work. I think also now looking at community issues is, is something that is also coming into play. You know, a, a good example of that would be our Left Hand Creek project. As council knows, we've come to you and given you updates on that several times. Obviously, we're trying to do the most efficient design that, that minimizes the public expense in, in controlling the 100-year floodway down Left Hand Creek. We also are trying to do it in a way that's environmentally sensitive. Some of the neighbors probably don't think of us that way right now because we did have to have to take down a lot of trees as part of this project. But that was the balancing effect. In other words, we, we, we had to be able to do the project and it does impact the environment while we're doing it. What we've included in the design, however, is to replace a lot of that tree, uh, uh, albeit outside of the channel so it doesn't, uh, impede flow. You know, then it's looking at the community. You know, one of the biggest community impact was, um, obviously getting folks out of the floodplain. Uh, and, and, and one of, one of the more interesting things that came out of it was the pedestrian bridge down near Pike Road, that the community came to us and said, "That's important to us." You know, we engineers didn't have that in the initial design because it wasn't technically needed, but it was critical to that neighborhood. And so we tried to listen and incorporate some of the community interests and the community concerns into the program. You know, all, obviously also from an economic viewpoint, uh, limiting or mitigating damage potential to private property from flooding is a huge economic issue. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the, the ideals that are embodied in this plan are not necessarily new and different. What we're trying to do is to, um, formalize it a little, a little further and broaden it out to overall city, uh, efforts. We, we, we all understand that, uh, the decisions that we make are long-term and that there are long-term investment decisions that the city makes all the time. And so our plan of what we have tried to come up with, and again, this is, uh, an outcome from the Focus on Longmont Strategic Plan, in particular, the, the one policy direction on enhance and protect the natural environment. But it's really broader than that because we're also trying to bring in some of the other concepts. But it's to consider, uh, these, these three different areas of economic, environmental, and social aspects to achieve higher levels of performance and, and, and higher value to our customers with regards to the decisions and the projects that we ultimately end up, uh, bringing to our community and then ultimately maintaining. Again, as I said before, to make sure that we're using our public funds as wisely as we can, um, and to meet the long-term goals for, uh, maintaining and, and, and improving the various systems, public systems that, that we as a municipal government here in Longmont are entrusted to provide to our citizens. So, I'm going to turn it over to Cal now. He's going to go through just a couple of quick things because I know you all saw the longer video and, um, not to extend this much longer, but just to let Cal have a couple of minutes on, a few more details on the plan.
Thanks, Dale. It's nice of Dale to describe me as an expert in something, uh, expert in my, expert in my own mind, I guess. Anyway, we, uh, started this effort back in 2007, believe it or not, uh, at a council retreat and that was also repeated at the council retreat in 2008 where this initiative was kind of discussed and kind of the outlines of where we were going with it were talked about. Uh, we actually started the Sustainability Plan per se in 2009 and that was with the help of a consultant and also with the help of federal grant money from the, uh, ERA money that came to us that year. The plan actually initially looked at providing justification for the Energy Efficiency Block Grant, uh, money that we're using now to, you know, upgrade a lot of things in our municipal buildings. But as part of that, we also looked at a little bit bigger picture and tried to come up with a more overall sustainable, sustainability plan. That process involved members of staff. We had advisory group in the staff. We also had many members of the community that were selected from all different parts of the community. So, including business, including, um, what you call nonprofit, including all kinds of areas. There's a very large group of people that helped us draft kind of the concepts and the philosophy behind the plan. The boards and, we, no, oops, I've got to go back one. Initial draft was presented to you guys in, in October 2010 and at that time, we were directed to go back and get some initial public input and involvement to, and better inform this plan and then bring that back to you. Uh, we did that with the city boards and commissions and there were a lot of them we took it to. There's a whole list. Some of those were originally involved in a Sustainability Plan discussion, but we brought them in anyway and got some very, very good comments. The overall feedback was very positive from all the boards and commissions. I got some interesting comments from people, uh, mostly related to readability, understandability, jargon- is, jargonicity and all of those kinds of things. Based on that feedback, we decided to go back, rewrite the plan, take it from 53 pages down to as short as we could and make it a lot clearer and more understandable. The original RW Beck Plan that was the 50-some-page Sustainability Plan included a lot of, um, information on a model that they developed to help evaluate, um, projects and programs. And we didn't think that was necessarily helpful to anybody in the community or anyone else. It may be a tool that we used eventually to look at things, but it was not something that, that, um, we wanted to keep in the plan per se. It is in the back, it is in the original plan documents, which are all still available. So, we had a consultant help us with this, was a design and graphics consultant, also public outreach consultant, and they did some really good work and helped us come up with a whole new look and kind of a whole new, whole new understanding of where we were going. Um, we kind of came up with a new logo of Long Live Longmont, which embodies those kinds of principles of looking into the future and, like, doing long-term planning. And I think Dale read the, uh, the kind of logo, which is transforming Longmont into a sustainable community to preserve our past, provide for the future, and prosper today. The goals of the plan, Dale covered a little bit of this, but it's really to define how we can use our limited economic and, and staff resources more effectively. Obviously, reduce our impact on the environment, provide higher-value services to Longmont and use, again, using our funds and our abilities more effectively and efficiently. Uh, increase the awareness and participation in city programs. We have a lot of programs that really relate to energy efficiency, environmental efficiency, um, in general, and they're all over the place. And one of the ideas behind this plan was to raise people's awareness of what the city has and what they can participate in. And then also show how the city can lead by example. Many, many of the cities who've adopted these kinds of efforts or initiatives have really used their own internal projects to show how you can, uh, get a better product for the future by, by looking at it more critically. So, the Sustainability Plan really went, was based on these focus areas, which were the built natural environment, community and individual well-being, economic vitality, energy, transportation, water, and zero wa- zero waste. These are also part of the Focus on Longmont, or many of them are, that was done many years ago, um, that came out of the community. So, we kind of built this plan around some of those and then took it a little bit further. Out of all the initial ranking of the programs that the city has in these different focus areas, the, the highest priority programs that were identified in this plan, there are the water conservation programs and there's seven of those total. Commercial lighting rebates, the dishwasher and clothes washer rebates, which by the way, along with the toilet rebate program is, are very popular programs. Um, residential lighting rebates, renewable energy purchase program, and hybrid vehicle purchases for the municipal fleet. Many of these things have already been started or are being done. So, as an example of, of the water conservation programs, we looked at, just as an example, and it's in the plan, is looking at water conservation programs from the triple bottom line perspective. You're looking at environmental, economic, and social factors to rank effectiveness and, and how these programs work. Um, and also they allow you to compare programs to each other to see which ones give you the best, the best result, uh, in these areas. So, those are, the, the three factors are obviously environmental, economic, and social. When we looked at the water programs and as we go through these, the discussion is as important as the factors. The discussion of these factors brings out other factors. You can, you can actually come up with different criteria in any of these environmental, economic, or social areas and, and as you go through projects and look at them and identify newer different things, and that's part of the strength of, of doing this kind of analysis because it allows things you may not have thought of to come up and be at least discussed, you're at least aware of them. They may be great ideas and they may actually change, change your entire project. In some cities where this has been done, it's, it's helped change their perspective on projects. Dale mentioned the Left Hand Creek project that we're doing. Um, some, some cities have taken this, this, this kind of approach to doing floodway projects and come up with a very different type of look and feel of floodway projects. Instead of channelizing everything and making it look like a big concrete sluice, you actually come up with something that's more of an amenity to the community. Anyway, on, on the water conservation part, um, on the environmental side, if you conserve water, you, you can less, use less treatment chemicals at the water plants and at the wastewater plants, use less energy. Uh, the water co- water that's conserved can actually be used for some positive environmental purposes, perhaps enhancing stream flow, perhaps supporting agriculture in, in the Saint Rain Valley. And there's probably other reasons you can come up with. On the economic side, uh, conserve water is actually one of our least expensive water supplies. Water conservation, just as energy conservation, is actually one of the cheapest water supplies you can get. Uh, rebates for water encourage purchase of irrigation components, household fixtures and other things, and that funnels money back into the community through your local merchants. Um, efficient water use saves, pays the users money, obviously. If you're using less water, you, you'll save money on your water bill. Uh, it also reduces the demand on our water and wastewater treatment plants and extends their useful life, which helps preserve the community's dollars, uh, for more important things like maybe increasing the quality of your water and wastewater rather than just building for more capacity. On the social end of things, uh, water conservation increases reliability and quality of our primary water supplies. And that's a real positive thing for business and for attracting people to the community. Um, having a plentiful and good-quality water supply is a big deal. And Longmont's got a great one. Efficient use of water is also a cost-effective way to keep all of our greenways, yards, open spaces, healthy and happy, and provide a little better quality of life for people. Again, you can probably come up with other criteria within any of these categories and as you discuss these things, it, it just comes, it helps you come up with better ideas on how to evaluate whether these programs are worthwhile or not. So, with that, that kind of, that's kind of a great, brief example. We have lots of others. Um, there's several others in the plan. Our, our Alleyway Project is another one that's cited in the plan that kind of shows the triple bottom line approach to, to thinking. The next step in this plan that we propose to you, and we also want to get your input and, and feedback tonight, obviously, but we were going to take this to the next stage of public involvement and that would be to go to, go to an outreach beyond the city's board and commissions and go to the general public, um, and see what we can find out. We, we have some plans on how to dialogue with the public and get some input. And what we would focus on is what it means to the people of Longmont, what it means to the community. Those comments would then be put together and brought back to you for further discussion, consideration. Uh, the ideas we have initially were presentations to local groups. Uh, we could use the Sustainability Advisory Panel, which we had originally, were part of our, our group that worked on the Sustainability Plan. Displays at city facilities, the usual things, open houses, uh, coffeehouse meetings, informal-type presentations or meetings to get, to get feedback from people. So, with that, I think what we're here tonight to, to talk about and ask you is what areas would you like us to revise, change? What specific things do you see in the document that you like, don't like, that you would like us to work on? And do you also have specific direction or feedback on the public outreach strategy? Anything else that comes to mind?
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, I always think of you as Grand Master Cal Youngberg, just so you know. It, that's how I will always think of you. I really like the look that you've established here and I, I like the tagline of Long Live Longmont. And I also really like the way that our city has already implemented so many things, um, that are mentioned here. And I will say that Fortune 500 companies down to homes have started applying sustainability principles and it is making a difference. And especially for communities, we have limited resources and so it is best practice to integrate some of these sustainability practices and especially the triple bottom line, um, to make sure that we don't go overboard one way or another. That, that's valuable. However, I've been looking at this for a really long time and I'm uncomfortable with it because every time I pull it up, I think I, I have a handle on it and it's not what I think it is. I pull it up and is this, what is this? Is this an administrative document? Is this just how we're going to run business in, in Longmont? Well, then we have what you can do for, for members of the community. So, there's a disconnect there. Is this a tool for budgeting for council members? Well, if it is, then what, what about our prioritization model that we have been using? Are we supplanting that with this? And another, is it a visioning document? Because it does seem to set forth a vision, but does it then displace Focus on Longmont? And it's very confusing when you're talking a lot about the seven focuses and then we have Focus on Longmont, which has five. So, that is confusing and I want to know, is this, uh, co-equal with Focus on Longmont? So, that doesn't make sense to me. Is it an educational tool? Because there is a lot in here about what residents can do. Because what residents do in their conservation really does affect, uh, our resources as a whole. And, but a lot of it is directed to how we as a city organization, how we run things. So, I think this is a document that I don't know what it is. I, I don't know who is supposed to use it. I don't know, I don't know what difference it will make than how we're doing business right now because I feel that it encompasses best practices in many regards, which we are already doing. Sorry, laying down here, but I have been thinking about this for a really long time. And every time it comes on, on the agenda, we have such a full agenda, I haven't had, I feel like I can't ask my questions because it, we have too much to do that, right? So, forgive me that I'm asking so many or, or setting out my concerns. All right. The thing that I, the specific, uh, focus area that I do also have real concerns about would be focus area number two. So, here's a document. We're talking about, um, trying to conserve our resources and how do we make the most out of what we have? And then we're expanding our purview. We're, in, in focus area number two, it says, "Ensure that all members of our community are able to meet their basic needs, having access to housing, health services, uh, um, education, and recreation." Okay, these are all good things, but as soon as you touch it, you own it. And so, as soon as we adopt a document that says, "We are going to do this," we are bound to set aside city resources to do that. So, we're conserving resources in one way, but then we are obligating ourselves to expend resources in other ways. Not to say it isn't something perhaps that we should look at, but we are having a debate nationally about what the role of government is in regards to healthcare. I really would prefer we not go there yet. Uh, we're having a discussion and I, I think it needs to continue and I don't want to, to tread on that right now. So, I've given you a lot of feedback. I am now going to be quiet.
I appreciate, I appreciate all that. Um, we have, we had a lot of input on this plan and there's a lot of, the focus areas reflect a lot of different ideas and, and concepts that were looked at. When you're looking at sustainability, some of the things you're looking at in that community and individual well-being area are more supporting a community's health and not so much physical, but both physical and mental health in, in ways, and looking at what you, and what, what the decisions you make and the projects you, you take on and the programs that you put in place to see how they, how they affect that for the long-term betterment of the community. I think there's, that's a difficult one to get a handle on and it is a statement of philosophy. I think there's, that's a difficult one to get a handle on, and it is a statement of philosophy more than it is a procedure or a method. Uh, there are methodical, what we're trying to do with this plan is to try and come up with a format or initial step to develop a method that we can use to bring back information to you and also to make us look at information in a different manner. So we can have a broader viewpoint and a better, and come up with a better product. In some way, in some areas, social things might be important to look at, in others, they may not have that much effect. For instance, upgrading our wastewater treatment plant probably isn't a whole lot of social impact there, other than it keeps the creek clean, and that's as much of an environmental impact as is a social one. Some of the other organizations that have started doing some of this, some of the stuff have equally interesting concepts like empowerment as part of their evaluations. Uh, that's, that's really difficult to get a handle on, whatever that means in any given context. So I, I really understand what you're saying, and we have talked about working on reorienting this to specifically address public works type programs and projects, which are, can be pretty much defined in a much, in a much clearer way. There will be obviously social impacts of those programs and projects, but they wouldn't necessarily touch on the things that you're talking about. Dale might probably want to fill me in and save me here.
No, no, you're doing fine, Cal, but I, just, uh, cause you're an expert. Or master, grand master. I, I would just add to what Carol was saying, and, and Councilmember Witt, I think you bring up a very, um, important issue. And this reminds me of when we were going through Focus on Longmont, and in particular, the, the, the particular policy direction there on community inclusiveness. Uh, or, or, or the policy direction on education. Neither, you know, certainly education is not the purview of the city. And the way we approached that was to, was to try to be in more of a supporting role. In other words, the city government would be supportive of the school district or, or Front Range Community College, those entities, that is their responsibility. And so what I, maybe what I'm hearing you saying, this is really sort of a checkback in this particular focus area, which is not a, a direct city service. And we need to be clear that in fact, what we're looking at here is, again, the city being in more of a supporting role, more of a, uh, possibly a partner role. Again, if that's something that the city council wants to head down that path. But I don't think what we're trying to say here is that the city is going to necessarily get into the health service business. I, I personally would hope we don't. I, I, I don't, I agree with you that that is beyond what we can, um, certainly do with the limited resources that we have now. But on the other hand, we, we can be supportive of, of, um, a healthy community in general. Uh, and, and trying to be, um, uh, provide education around that, maybe in just a supporting role or a partnership role. And, and that's the kind of good feedback that helps us to be able to revise this, to make it clear to, to people.
I think, again, this document is a first step document. It probably is just to lay out the initial concepts and ideas. And where we would go from here is actually develop a method. This is not the supplant to replace Focus on Longmont. It's not to replace prioritization. This is actually a supplement to those things. The idea was to use these kinds of evaluations and these kinds of criteria to, to come up with a methodology we could use and again, bring back that information to you. Use it for ourselves to evaluate things. And this, this simply was intended to be a first step, and as such, it has a lot of things in it that probably are philosophy statements, as, as I think you've identified. Or maybe position statements that, um, if, if, if you feel uncomfortable with those, and I think I've, I've found some of these things to be kind of scattered myself. Uh, that it would be better to bring things into a more coherent or cohesive manner, as to exactly what we're trying to accomplish with this document. I think that's what you're saying. We can certainly work on that, um, in the next go-round. And I'll be working on it myself because I, I should tell you that Ron Shah, our sustainability coordinator, is leaving us. And I'm sorry to see him go because he's worked really hard on this and a lot of other projects in the city, but, uh, he's going to be joining the private sector. Working on, uh, energy demand side management and conservation for, uh, a consulting company, so we wish him well.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coons. Uh, we'll run all the best. We will miss you. Seeing this, I had some of the same comments that Councilmember Witt had. I don't think this is ready for public, for public consumption yet. Um, it's still very wordy. Um, and I remember back in 2007, talking to Doug Brown about, he goes, the next thing's coming up is sustainability. And, you know, Doug ran me through what sustainability was. And, you know, fast forward four years, sustainability's taken a, that word has taken another shift. And one that I'm not real comfortable with, and I know a lot of people in this community is not comfortable with. Um, I, I could see the integrated, you know, conservation plan. Cause I believe it's about conservation of the natural resources we have while looking at, um, what we have, what we had in the past, what we have in, in the present, what we have, what we look to have and be able to pass on to our kids in the future. The, uh, focus area number two is one of the biggest problems I have. You know, one of the paragraph, second paragraph after the objective paragraph, the last sentence, for Longmont to thrive, all of our citizens must have the basic, their basic needs met. That's a bold statement coming from a city. Is that the job of the local government to ensure that? I don't believe so. There are, looking at, and I'll just move forward, like zero waste. When I first got on council, um, EcoCycle came up with a resolution that, you know, Longmont was gonna strive to be a zero-waste community. And I talked with Eric Lombardi about it quite extensively, cause it sounded like we were mandating that the, that everyone in, in, in Longmont is gonna have to recycle everything, compost everything, and you're not gonna have, be able to do any type of, uh, we're not, we're basically gonna get rid of solid, you know, basically solid waste and, you know, and trash pickup. What he told me was that it's a goal. You know, it's a goal to strive for, to have, to try to encourage people to, to recycle, uh, so, those people that like to compost. I'm not a big composter, but I recycle a heck of a lot more since I met Mary Blue when, you know, I was sitting, you know, sitting on council with her. But it, it's things of that nature, you know, instead of focus area number seven, zero waste, waste diversion. Um, it, it, it's, it's simple things like that where you, I think you can build on trying to, trying to get everyone to agree that this is a good plan. You know, there, there's a lot of, there's quite a few errors in here, too.
So is a draft.
You know, and there's a, a strategy is to advocate for local and regional legislation to support cost-effective, efficient and environmental sound, which that's supposed to be solid, waste reduction. We do that on our own. We do, I think we do a very good job. It, it's that social aspect of overreaching is the problem I'm having with this. I'm all for, you know, some of the action items here are, you know, uh, replace an area of your lawn with zero scape. Replace your toilet with a water-sensitive toilet. Wash your car to car wash. You know, I learned that from Dale. You don't wash it at, at the house, cause it goes into the system and messes up the water. Turn off your appliance, you know, these are all action, action items that we're letting people know, here's how you're gonna help conserve what we have here in the city of Longmont. That's, that's, I think, what this plan should be addressing. Instead of, you know, it, it seems that we're just try, we're trying to force something on folks, sustainable, 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 sustainable. And your PowerPoint presentation of sustainable is in there 12 times. It's like getting beat over the head. In the, in the, um, in the plan itself, it just felt like I was getting bombarded. You know, and we try to define what sustainability does, or what sustainability is, and, you know, I, I have to attribute this to Doug, Doug Brown. Got me, got me looking on Wikipedia back four years ago. And do, are we gonna look at security, peace and social justice as well with an integrated sustainability plan? Like, like you said, with empowerment. It's kind of a stretch. That's where I'm uncomfortable. I'm very uncomfortable. But I think the act, the take action items are fantastic. We want to encourage people to go out and buy a low water, use of, uh, uh, water use washing machine or a low-energy refrigerator or a low-energy television. I'm all for that. But you're gonna have people that are, you know what? I'm gonna do what I want. And trying to make sure they have their basic needs met, you're gonna get those folks, I don't wanna compost. I don't, I'm gonna wash my car on my street. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna throw my grass clippings away and let them go to the landfill. That you're gonna get those folks. Is, again, I, I don't think it's ready. Um, I, I think some of, again, it's too wordy, and if we can narrow it down again, and again, I, I would kill sustainability completely. You may, you know, conservation, give me, give me another word besides sustainability. Try to, it, it, try to, um, again, educate everyone about what, what this actually is. Cause I think Councilmember Witt's right. We're not, I'm not quite sure what this is. We're not, if we're not gonna supplant the comp plan, we're not gonna supplant Focus on Longmont, we're not gonna supplant the charter, where does this actually fit? That is not clear. But I, I think it's, it's definitely an outline that we can build on. And, and, and the, later on, should this come back to us and then go off for public, uh, input, I think you'll find that it might be a, a better product that everyone can buy into.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coons. Well, I won't repeat everything they said.
Thank you.
So I don't have anything to say, no. And looking at this, there's a couple of organizations that already exist within the city that do some of the things that you're talking about. Live Well Longmont, I think promotes healthy living within the community. Life Longmont Learning promotes education and, uh, supports education. This is way too broad in terms of what you wanna be or what we wanna be. I think if you were to focus it on, again, uh, conservation, energy savings, et cetera, it would be, um, more sustainable, where's Gabe? More sustainable. But a lot of what you're trying to promote, like you said, or that you've listed, has already been or is being done. Boulder County has a lot of the stuff that you have listed in the back in terms of, uh, commercial lighting upgrades and rebates, uh, AC rebates. They have that right now for commercial buildings. They had a program not too long ago for, um, energy waste reduction in the homes where they did an energy audit. And you were able to get money to retrofit the home, to seal it, windows, et cetera. So a lot of that's in place. So what is the net sum gain that we're gonna do that isn't already being done? A lot of the appliances now, you can't buy anything really unless you're buying used old appliances. You can't buy anything that's not really energy efficient, whether it's a TV, dishwasher, washer dryer, you name it, refrigerator, they're all energy efficient. TVs are energy efficient. So what is it that we're really trying to accomplish? Okay, what, what's the true message that we wanna end up with? And is this gonna be an ordinance, a policy, a? A what? What's the ultimate goal? And I guess if we, if we can define what the ultimate goal is and then work backwards, you might be able to come up with better definitions of what, what you wanted there.
Councilmember Samori, one of the, one of the goals of this, and it's not particularly well articulated, I'll admit, the plan was to come up with, the next, one of the next steps is to come up with a consistent methodology and process. So we can use triple bottom line analysis on things that we're working on and evaluate them in that, in that way. I can guarantee you that not everything we look at in public works even is evaluated consistently from that, that perspective. I think things in the, in the water wastewater area that I've been involved with for 30-plus years, I hate to admit it, um, is, um, have been looked at a lot more in that, that perspective. I don't think some other things have been. And so one of the, one of the results of this plan or, or one of the products of this plan is to come up with that process. And that would be something that we would have in a standardized way that we come to you with and show you how we've done that analysis. That's one of the things, it's not particularly well described in this plan. This plan has a lot of, I understand what you're saying, not what all of you are saying. The plan has a lot of things that, that reach out into community level, that go beyond our city services levels. Uh, there, the encouragement, as, as Councilmember Santos has said, the encouragement to people to do certain things is a good thing, I think. But that's kind of a different document from the document that talks about what we're gonna do internally, or what we'd like to do internally. So, no, it wouldn't be an ordinance. It would be, it would be a guidance or, or, or an internal policy procedure.
So I think, uh, we're doing an up, update of Focus on Longmont. Could this be a piece of that update? And that's where you would get your community involvement and feedback.
We've talked about that, actually, yeah.
Cause I, yeah, so we don't wanna be the, that horse.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thanks. Um, so I guess, you know, I, I'm, I'm real sorry that, um, uh, you gave us a document that was highly technical. We told you to make it into Disney World. And then we're saying, you know, it's too, we're hearing too many tunes of Small World in our heads. So, um, you know, it's, it's kind of, um, I, I guess you're, you're, you're sitting in, in, in front of the firing squad tonight. Cause we've asked you to do some, something that takes something very highly technical, and the idea of sustainability is viewed differently by a lot of different groups as well. It's not, it's, uh, I believe the, the definition of the word keeps flowing back and forth, and it's leaking into other, other, um, ways that people are utilizing it. But also, um, you know, you really can't have it both ways. I think that this kind of, um, a plan, um, is like the wildlife management plan. That's pretty technical, too. That happened many years ago, and, you know, that's part of Focus on Longmont in some ways, referencing, you know, the, the work that we have for the local environment and how we view, um, our interaction as, as people with the, um, um, the environment of, of, um, nature. And, you know, a lot of other policies and guidelines have, have, um, grown out of that plan. So, you know, I'm looking at this a little bit differently, um, and if it, I mean, I, I, you know, when we look at focus area two, you know, is that a little bit reaching well? I, I understand how people feel uncomfortable with the word healthcare or, you know, talking about anything that has to do with any national issue that's become very partisan. You know, however, frankly, I, I see focus area two as a function of when my neighborhood stunk so badly that if you had a house on the market, you wanted to make sure that the wastewater treatment plant was working that day because you wouldn't sell your house. To me, that's kind of a health and safety deal. And one of the things that I would think this plan would give us guidance on is something such as, um, it's a sustainable, well, I won't use that word. It's something else to not have your neighborhood stink because the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant haven't been done. And we hadn't been as aggressive as we possibly could be as a city to explore options to make that, um, odor, odor, um, not occur when we had many different kinds of weather conditions. And let me tell you, it was not very bearable. And stinky neighborhoods, industrial neighborhoods are a, um, a kind of, um, uh, another kind of social cause, social, um, uh, community piece. In some, in some ways, there's national policy for brownfields. And so sustainability plan could also help address some environmental issues that in, involve, um, people's basic living condition, brownfields, um, environmental degradation, um, and other things. And, and frankly, you know, you might wanna, you might wanna consider looking at focus area two, fine. But again, we asked you to make it look happy and friendly, and it looks happy and friendly. If there's still too many words for people, I don't know, you know, what you're gonna end up cutting out when you're trying, this plan is really to introduce general members of the public who are not doing inside baseball like all of us on various issues. Some introduction to the idea of sustainability and looking at it through different lenses so you connect with people. And, um, you know, you could even look at, you could pick apart any one of these things, focus area three on economic vitality, to say that we want to strategically invest in our community in order to ensure in order to ensure that future generations enjoy the same economic possibility, possibilities as past generations. Well, you know, if we don't do something about our transportation plan, then no one's gonna be able to get anywhere. And, you know, our kids are gonna spend three hours on the road getting to school or going somewhere where it took us, you know, um forty-five minutes. Um, so, so, you know, any of these things have these broad statements and, you know, what are we gonna have? Like three checkpoint items and people aren't going to get any background information? I think what you've done is provide some background information, some ideas, some vision. And I'm also looking, some of these statements are exactly things that came out of Focus on Longmont. I mean, I sat in all those meetings, I've read Focus on Longmont, so some of it's not a big jump. And um, you know, I do like the take action stuff. I think those are really good boxes. And, you know, I, I don't think that this document is intended to be the be all and end all of everything. If it was, um, it would grow to many, many more pages, have less friendly graphics. And um, it's not to say that this just doesn't get a refresher to accommodate some council members um problems, you know, inherent problems with it. But also, it might be a good idea to see how it tests with people that are not in the know. If people understand this or if people, members of the public that are uninformed find Focus Area Two sort of like, you know, raising eyebrows, then we look at that barometer also. You know, I, I don't, I don't think it's as awful as, as other people have indicated to you. So just wanted to let you know, it's not terrible. I don't hear Small World after all buzzing in my head all the time, so.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, thanks. Eh, I couldn't imagine being a city staffer. Eh, I tell people that it's like, I feel like I'm one-seventh of a schizophrenic boss. And it changes every two years. In two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when you guys first started thinking about this, I didn't even know what award was. So eh hats off to you folks for your hard work and eh standing there patiently. Eh, thank you. Um, thoughts that came to mind as I'm listening to my colleagues? I think that one word that I keep hearing continuously is this triple bottom line. It's how eh, so question would simply be, would it be more appropriate to simply have a city or administrative policy that says, in the decisions we undertake, we shall be mindful of the impacts that it will have on our city's culture, environment, and economy. Period, full stop. Eh, love simplicity, that's pretty simple. The other thing is eh, I also really like the take action. Um, I'm terrible at a lot of these things and need to become better. Um, I think that maybe a declaration that just says, we encourage the city of Longmont, the citizens of Longmont to take action and do the following, and then a list. And then eh, the one thing that I was gonna say that I think that just general comment rather than a question is I'd like to see whatever we do include along with what's already in here a tone of self-reliance, providing opportunity and providing tools. Eh, I'm a big believer that the best way to save anything is to give people ownership in something that they build themselves. Now, that doesn't mean that if you aren't capable of building, you're providing for yourself, that the city doesn't step up and take care of you. But nevertheless, I would just like to see something that says, you know, self-reliance and providing opportunities is a good way to get this done. And so that way, I mean, like for example, people keep focusing on Focus Area Number Two. Well, you can read that one of two ways, the government's there for a handout or the government's there to provide opportunity. And I eh, I was fortunate enough to be sitting with Edwina Salazar, again, over at the Hours Center. And she said something that really rang true to me. She said, we're not about giving handouts, we're about giving handups. And so I'd like to see something in here that just in general feels and smells more along that spirit of entrepreneurship, progress, growth, opportunity, truth, justice, and the American way. With that man, Apple Pie. So I guess eh, I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Councilmember Witt.
All right. I like self-sufficiency. And here, here is how I, I see that this could be best utilized. I think that this is an administrative policy and I see that our different um for instance, water. Our water department would do the education piece on conservation to our, our water customers. The take action steps for water. And I think they're doing that already. And our, our LPC, they are in charge of the take action steps for our electrical cu- customers. I think we're making it too, too heavy. It's, these are all great ideas. I think it can be implemented instantaneously administratively. And um, I, so all good ideas, but I think that we're, we're biting off more than we can chew. So eh, I, I would just say that eh, I would like to see it as an administrative policy.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In public policy, generally what we do is we set policy to fix a problem and to do that, we have to define the problem. I'm not seeing a problem. Um, that's my only problem with it. I love the take action steps, I think those are great. And I, I do believe we need to conserve and plan for the future, I think that's also great. But we're here to, to do public policy and to do that, we need to define the problem and I'm not seeing the problem. That's my problem with it.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You're getting better at it. I hope that you guys aren't hearing that we don't like what you've done. I wanna make sure of that first. What we're saying is that, that it's not that we don't like what you have, it's that we need to narrow it and focus it more on what the end goal that you want it to be is, okay? And we're working together here to define what is, is going to be, okay? Is this a push or a pull? Is this something that the, that we as a municipality are pushing onto the citizens of Longmont? Or is this something that they're asking for, okay? And we're trying to come up with a solution for what they're asking for. And I think we need to be clear in that process because it can make a difference on how we approach it and how it is received on whether it's a push or a pull.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, I, I don't remember saying that this was terrible. I don't know where that came from. I do have a, I have a problem with one particular word. Again, I think there are things in here that we should be promoting. I think there's some things in here that we're overreaching. And, you know, Councilmember Levinson, we were asked, what areas would you like to, like us to revise further? Are there any specific changes would you like to see? When we looked at this, again, this started in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, different council. Two thousand nine, different council. This is two thousand eleven. Um, and now seeing what is being presented, yeah, I, I, I do have some, some issues with it. But I don't think just, just say, just say, let's just throw it out. It's not any good. Let's start from scratch. Not proposing that at all. I think there, there's just some things that need to be tweaked. It is still a little wordy. I mean, looking at the one pager, and there's a one pager in here, Councilmember Levinson, um, about what this list does, what this does and what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, I think a lot of people will read that and probably not read the rest. And then you have those folks that will say, hey, where's the rest of the plan? And then however it's presented again, here it is. Um, I'll, I love the long live Longmont. Kind of almost ties in with you belong in Longmont. You know, you belong in Longmont, you, you deserve to live long in Longmont. Say that three times. Um, again, m- my only suggestion is, is that we and Dale's been writing, you guys have been writing, all the comments we have. I would just say, just go back, do, do a, just a revision and bring it back to us in a month or two. That's, that, I don't have, I, I have no problem with that. And we're, and looking at this and trying, again, trying to find a way that we can win over everybody on this. Um, I think that's probably the best approach.
So basically, you're saying to direct staff to modify the eh sustainability plan and return to city council with a modified plan, basically, is the option?
Mayor Coombs, I, I'll make that, I'll make that motion. I would direct option number three, which is direct staff to modify the ISP and return to city council with a modified plan. And I believe that you guys have plenty of notes. Um, again, I'm not saying just toss it. And having been staff, you know, I, I, I worked for members of Congress, I've worked for members of the legislature. I know, I, I, it may not feel warm and fuzzy that, God, we gotta go back and do this. I understand that. I want you, I want all members of staff to win. You guys worked very hard on the, the issues that you bring up to us, whether it's a trespassing ordinance for railroads, whether it's medical marijuana ordinances or what have you. I don't wanna see you fail. I wanna see you succeed. And if it just takes a little bit of tweaking and you succeed, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of you. I, I am proud of you because of the hard work that you've done. So that you don't take this as, gosh, everything's just awful and go back and rework it. There's some good things in here and I think we all expressed it, you know, those items to you.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. One, one final thing that I also think might be useful to others. You're gonna cut down on the words a lot and there might be things in the sustainability um plan that actually are um that grow out of other city documents. They, you may just wanna put um a little box that says, you know, are you interested in reading further? And, you know, throw things in like, um, you know, people are really concerned about the natural environment, you know, um Wildlife Master Plan or, you know, any of these things, you know, Focus on Longmont or any of these other interim plans that might be um eh some goals and policies we already have. So if people are really interested in digging into nuts and bolts, then they can get those nuts and bolts references without having to go do a lot of work. And that way, you might be able to still have the goal of cutting down on, on words but giving some annotation for people that might wanna look at something more deeply. And there's not, that, that's not reflected in here, you know, it might be, some of it may be a bit simplistic for somebody that wants to even go down one layer deeper in any of the particular topics, fo- the focus areas.
Okay, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Shall we vote? Passes unanimously. So we've directed staff to modify the ISP plan or return to city council with a modified plan.
Thank you all, it was very good, very good input, appreciate it.
Mayor, the only bad news is Ron Shaw can't go to his new job now for another six, eight weeks. Mayor, your next item will be introduced by Valerie.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Valerie Skit, your city clerk. Um, we have brought to you today um a question, a policy question that we'd like some direction from council and that's regarding the eh residency requirements of our boards and commission members. Um, for, for years, it's been our understanding that when a board member moves outside the city limits that, that they need to resign and that's the direction we've been providing to folks. And um, just recently, we had a couple of members res- eh, eh, move outside the city limits. One of them is a water board member who's gonna resign effective at the end of the year when their replacement is um appointed. And then the other one is an airport advisory board member who would like to, really would like to continue serving on the airport advisory board. And asked some questions about our, the way our charter and ordinances were worded and, and our attorney and um got with us and we looked those over and it is a little bit ambiguous. We do have some past practices that we base that um direction on to the board members, including a court case where um that the city was upheld where we asked a board member to leave the pension board um once the, once they moved outside the city limits and we were sued and the court upheld um that decision. Also, we have had um in front of voters twice, a charter change to allow pension board members to be to live outside the city limits and it was turned down twice by our voters. So because this came up again and we're providing directions to folks um that is really a council policy decision, we decided we would bring it back and try to get clear direction from this council and maybe um put it in your council rules of procedure so that there isn't any inconsistency or ambiguous language. So that's what, what the intent of this was for and um be glad to answer any questions.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Coombs. Not so much a um question, but it seems to me that we are appointing people, except for planning, eh, excuse me, except for LDDA, that we are appointing people to our boards and commission, commission, eh commissions that are residents of the city of Longmont. These are the city of Longmont boards and commissions. To me, you need to be a resident. So, you know, um, I know there's other, maybe other opinions, other people have the lights on. But I believe option one's the best one. I mean, it's been consistent that how we have addressed this informally is that once you move out, you have to resign. I do take um eh, I, I do understand that there's, there's a board member that would like to stay on, have an involvement on there. You can be involved by being, by being a, a participant in public invited to be heard. Or, you know, if a board member would like you to give information, we have, we have boards and commissions members that, that have other people that help them with eh, eh their packets and things of that nature. But to me, it's eh, this is clear cut. These are the city of, the city of Longmont boards and commissions for the residents of the city of Longmont. Period.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would agree with eh Councilman, eh Mayor Protem Santos that these are city of Longmont boards and commissions. However, what do we want to do in this one particular case? Do we want to grandfather, do we not? I could go either way. I think that we have a pretty in-depth master plan process going on right now which this board member has been involved in from the beginning, making very good contributions. And quite rightfully, that was not in the job description when she signed up. So I, I will abide by what other council members would like to have happen. But I think that um in this case, I'd like to grandfather this board member. But if other council members disagree, I, I will abide by that. But absolutely, we need to change this so that we only have Longmont residents serving on our boards.
I guess I'll skip in here with my two cents. I kinda like the idea, if we're gonna make a change, that to me, if someone's near the end of their term or has, you know, nine months or less than a year and they've moved out, I don't see a problem with them just serving out and finishing out their term on the board, um, just because they moved out of the city. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, I think that there's another aspect we, we haven't brought up. I mean, if somebody moves outside of the city and they might even move out of state, they could just continue to fly in for the meetings if they wanted to, you know? How, I mean, we don't, we're not saying that, I mean, there was a period of time where I was on a city board and commission and, you know, I was gonna be actually leaving. you know, I was gonna be actually leaving the country for a while, and so I resigned my position. But, you know, it could have been that I could have kept my position because it was only a temporary situation. I still have my house in Longmont and I could have flown back. But really, the, the primary, um, uh, situation was that, that I knew I couldn't commit to going to the meetings and everything. So we could end up with extrapolating this to some nth degree where somebody doesn't live here, they could have actually relocated out of state, but they do enough business maybe in the area that they could plan to make a business trip once a month to do on a board and commission, and I think that, um, we could get into a very sticky wicket very quickly. Um, you know, in a situation that would, um, you know, not be in the best interest of, um, of the citizens. You know, plus there is an expectation that, um, you are a, um, uh, you meet all the requirements, and I think the expectation would be that you meet all the requirements all the time. So if, for example, you decide you don't want to be a voter anymore, do we find out that no one, that people have not kept their voter registration up? And they might have moved within the city, but they haven't re-registered to vote and they're not a qualified elector any longer. So would we not have them on a board and commission if they choose not to be a voter? Um, for one reason or another. So I, I really think that, um, we have to stick to the rules and in fact, um, I mean, the end of the term is 2012, there's one meeting left. And, um,
There's a whole year left.
Oh, twenty, I'm, I'm looking ahead too far. Yeah, okay. Well, it, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking that it's, um, it would not allow us to get somebody on for the, the term, uh, to fill that term and then, um, uh, possibly have somebody who's gonna continue because after 2012, she would absolutely be unable to serve. And so we might want to make that transition earlier than later, um, I'm thinking. Um, and not, and I guess what we're really being asked to talk about is the philosophy, the po, the policy and not the particular person. And while all of us understand the dedication of this airport advisory board member, um, you know, it's, it's, the timing is unfortunate. Um, however, if we make an exception for that, then, you know, it might come up that we have to make similar exceptions, um, based on people and not policy. Um, and, uh, we have to be careful, I think.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Parade of horribles. What if we have someone who lives in Longmont, the planning and zoning board, moves to Firestone and, uh, remains on the planning and zoning board? However, the issue before them is whether or not to frack in Longmont or Firestone. So I mean, you, you can, I mean, in general, I grew up in Greeley, I love Greeley, but if you stick me on a Greeley board, I'm gonna make bad decisions 'cause, no offense Greeley, I don't care. Um, so I think it's good policy to require people on our boards to live in the city. Um, that said, what I think we should do is I think we should go for option one, direct staff to bring back policy requiring automatic resignation of board members to move outside the city during their term. However, there are times when people should be permitted to remain on the board. For example, my understanding is we, we have a current issue at the airport extending the length of the runway. I understand they've been working hard. I understand that Ms., is it Ms. Lipsky? Or, how do you pronounce it? Ms. Lipsky, uh, has been an integral part in that. There's some institutional knowledge, if you will. And I think that it would be in our best interest, it would behoove council as well as the city to be able to have the option to retain a specific board member if we so choose. So what I would recommend is, or even dare say I would move, that we go with directive number one, however, we also take a little bit of number two and say that however, council would be allowed to retain board members for whatever reason through a two-thirds majority vote. So basically, if there's a board member that we really feel should remain, for whatever reason, we remain able to allow them to stay.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Santos?
You had me almost at hello. You had me until however. Um, looking at the qualifications of city council men, which hopefully is person, because we need to address that. The highlighted one, it says during the term of his office shall reside in the ward from which he is elected. Very clear. So if I move to Firestone, which I don't have no intentions of ever doing, sorry chat, chat hour, um, I have to give up my seat as a city council member. Regardless if we're working on the budget, regardless if we're working on integrated, integrated sustainability plan, whether, uh, whether we're working on researching for a city manager. Period. I have to resign. If it's, if that, those are the qualifications for the members of council and the mayor. That should be the qualifications for those that sit on the city boards and commissions. No exceptions. We're about to go through, um, uh, boards and commissions, we're gonna have interviews this weekend for boards and commissions. To be honest with you, I've seen two members of the airport advisory board that pretty much left their qualifications blank. To me, they just think they're gonna be reappointed. They didn't tell me why, what they bring to the board, what they do for the board, or what they see the potential problems or issues that are coming before the board. They didn't take the time to fill out their application for re, uh, reapplication. To me, they basically disqualified themselves. So in my purview, is that we have, I believe, two positions or three positions for airport advisory board?
I believe there's two.
Two.
Depending on what you do tonight.
Okay. So we could potentially have two new members of the advisory, airport advisory board, potential. Why, why should this one person be grandfathered in? And you can, you can, you, you can argue all you want that they've worked on this, granted, but again, like myself, if I've worked on something, if I'm working on, uh, uh, finding the new city manager and I'm going through whatever we're gonna get in the next couple of weeks and then I move somewhere, I'm done. Plain and simple.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you. Uh, do we ever have a position for an ad hoc member that they could become a non-voting member? And, you know, do we have that possibility? I know we could possibly say, we'll just appoint this person as ad hoc and this particular person and allow her to, um, not have voting rights, but she could provide the institutional knowledge. I mean, we have a power to make it up as we go along anyway. We can do, we, we do it a lot, but, um, I'm just wondering to resolve this particular, um, uh, conflict, whether or not we could just allow an ad hoc member and just appoint a special ad hoc member and name it that person. And then when that person, you know, or we could set, set a specific time when, you know, the, the, uh, master plan should be really all wrapped up in, in, uh, by, uh, March, really.
Mayor Coombs? Um, Mayor Coombs, members of council, these are your boards. You can probably do what you want. There's nothing in the ordinances that makes that provision. I guess from a staff standpoint, what we're trying to do is not bring every single board member back to you for direction when they move outside the city limits or when something comes up. Current, and, which we haven't had to in the past because the practice has been when they move out, you know, they resign, and so that's the direction that we provided, um, in this instance. And, and this person is really very interested in the board and would love to stay on, but if you make an exception for this person, staff will bring everyone back to you in the future because it is not our decision to make, it is your decision. So we're just trying to get clarity to save you some work in the future, but it is, they are your boards, you can do whatever you want to.
And, and I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm just offering to other council members whether or not we want to, you know, even depart further from the, uh, the center line and say, okay, we're not gonna have her continue till, to, to finish till 2012, but we're going to allow her to serve in an ad hoc, um, position with non-voting rights because then, you know, that might meet the needs of, of Councilmember Witt and other members of the, uh, airport advisory board that want the institutional knowledge, um, as, uh, Councilmember Bagley pointed out, but it would not give her any more, um, uh, voting on the board.
Mayor, if I could, I, I believe that, uh, if you took that approach, you would have to change your ordinance that you currently have that, uh, creates the, uh, airport advisory board.
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm going to not be supportive of the amendment because I feel that it adds a capriciousness to our process. Yes, I, I am kind of fighting for this one individual because that wasn't in the rules when she signed up. But, so what I would say is that anybody who is currently serving on a board and commission who moves within reason has the option, if it's less than a year, to finish out their term. And so anybody who gets on to a board or commission from now on, sorry, that was in the rules, you knew that when you started. And, but, anybody up till this point has the option. So that is why I'm not going to support the amendment because I think that we do need, because then we're gonna have, as, as, uh, city clerk Skid mentions, we're gonna have people come in, not all the time, because hopefully not, people are not leaving the city all the time, but it, it will come up and up and up, and I, I just think that this is cleaner.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's okay, Councilmember Witt. It's, uh, uh, there's no ego in my recommendation. I'm just trying to figure out what's best. And, uh, here, in speaking with yourself, other members of council, some of the airport advisory board, uh, what I'm trying to do is, my understanding is that Ms. Lipsky is a calming effect on the board. Uh, I understand that things can get heated. There's a lot of different ideas and she provides, she, she's, she contributes in this particular case. Uh, she moved outside Longmont city limits, but is very close to our city limits. And so, uh, more than anything, my amendment was simply looking for a way for Ms. Lipsky as well as other members who we want to retain can be retained. That's pretty much it.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And this will be my last comment on this motion. You talk about muddying the waters with what members of council are, are suggesting. Again, looking back at the qualifications for members of council. When you move, you're done. So, you know, why don't we just go ahead and put up a, a, a charter amendment saying that, you know, if I move outside the city of Longmont, I, I can still retain my city council seat? That's basically what you're saying. For, for the duration of my term, please. To be clear and concise with everyone that's on boards and commissions right now. If you move outside the city, I'm sorry, you have to resign your position regardless of what you're working on. To have, to be a calming effect on, you can say that about any, any, any board or commissioner on any boards. In fact, I'm sure we have board, uh, board, uh, and commission members who resigned because they had to move that are so similar calming effects. I can think of one in particular on the transportation board, uh, Dave. Yeah, nice calming effect, but unfortunately he moved to Loveland, he had to resign. That's fair to everyone involved, not this grandfathering and trying to pull a rabbit out of my hat to accommodate because somebody has a calming effect.
I just wanted to make a comment that you're talking about council members and boards and commissions, which are two different things, and they have different requirements right now that there's some disparities on, um, so they're not exactly equal at this point anyway.
Well, Mayor Coombs, I, I think what I'm trying to, to say is that why are board and commission members above council? No one, no one should be, no members of any board should be, if, if we have to live by the rules that state that during the term of our office, we shall reside in the ward or the city, want to reside and we're elected to, then we move, why would we give special dispensation to board and commission members who live outside the city? They, we should all be, we should all be equal. As far, as far as, once we move, we have to resign.
Well, on that thing, but to be on a board and commission, you have to be a registered voter for a year before and you don't have to be that to be on council.
You have to be a registered voter that's living in the city of Longmont?
You have to live in the city at least a year and to be a registered voter.
But to, to me, that is, once you, you're no longer a resident of Longmont, I'm sorry, you have to resign.
All right, uh, Councilmember Witt?
This is spinning out of control. All right, guess what? Do you know what? Let's, let's just, you know, it's, I do want to mention though, Board Member Lipsky actually did submit a letter of resignation and was advised that please don't hand us your letter of resignation because we've already, uh, drawn up a, a council item that's gonna be on the 29th. So we do not accept, we, we would not like to accept your letter of resignation. So you know what? She was willing to do it. You know what? Let's, let's just vote and I would respectfully ask that wonderful council member Bagley retract his, his, um, amendment so that we can just move on.
All right, let me restate my motion. I move that we adopt number one as the option.
Number one, there's no other. Sorry. The, from my understanding, the original motion was however, adding part of number two. So Councilmember Bagley, which is it?
I move that we adopt number one, period, full stop. No however, no buts, no ifs or ands?
Okay, I'll second it. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, before we vote though, I would like to maybe ask for a collective thank you for, you know, in advance of the vote to, um, uh, Ms. Lipsky for all of her service, her dedication to the board, and even to the fact that she was off the airport advisory board for a while because of a snafu and, um, that she had been willing to be consistent and serve and a steady, dedicated member and, um, and I just want to acknowledge that personally, um, I appreciate her service, but I would also like council to, to join in a nod of the head maybe to show our appreciation for her past service before the vote.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As we all know, my bedtime's 6:30 and I get tired. And so, uh, the, uh, in, in all seriousness, uh, I second that. If that was a motion. Well, yeah, well, nod of the head for me too, but, uh, and yeah, nod of the head and thanks. Uh, I personally just gave a lot of time, uh, because of the work she did. So thank you. I don't do that lightly after 6:30.
See no other discussion? Let's vote.
Oh, wait. Oh, you're gonna have to raise your hand because I'm not a worker of the technology. All right. Okay, seven to zero. So, thank you. Um, before we move off this topic, could I just get some clarification from Councilmember Witt? Um, because you indicated that Ms. Lipsky submitted a letter of resignation and was and was told that we weren't gonna accept it or to withdraw it because the communication had already been prepared?
Yes.
Um, I prepared the communication. I don't think I provided that direction to anybody, so I was wondering.
It was a member of your staff.
My staff? Thank you.
We'll leave it there.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let's move on to, um, the next item. Ready? And that is your internal boards and, um, city council appointments to your internal boards and the external boards. boards and the external boards. This is work that you started on your organizational meeting. And so I have a list of boards, you each gave me your five top choices of internal boards, five top choices of external boards. Yeah, and so we'll, we're going to start from there, but first of all, I'd like to just invite council to have a discussion among yourselves about your role as liaisons. And the reason I ask that is because we get questions from board chairs, we get questions from staff liaisons about expectations of the council liaisons, and I've even had questions from some city council members about, are we expected to attend every single meeting and that kind of thing? These are your boards, this is your role, and so it's really your decision, and I think it would be, it would be nice to have you guys discuss that. So, one of the things we're going to do in February is have a training session with board chairs, and then I can clearly relay what your expectations are as of yourselves to them so that they have the same expectation. One of the things I have done for you and laid at your desk tonight is kind of a history of the number of boards that council members have served on, goes back to 1996, and you will see that the internal boards that council serve on has grown from 14 to 20. We used to only have liaisons on 14 of our boards, we now have them on 20. External boards have grown from 13 to 23. So your total commitment as council members, in addition to your role as council on Tuesday nights, has gone from 28 boards to 43 boards that you're trying to cover. And so, that's another reason that I think it would be nice to have that kind of discussion about your expectations of yourselves. So, I'll just lay that out there, and if you don't want to do it, fine, we'll move on to the appointments, but it would be helpful for staff.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You know, I remember when I got on council in '08, the council that came in in '07 during the November election. I came in in '08, and I remember hearing from members of staff, you guys go to every board meeting, unprecedented. You know, to my retort was, because I'm trying to learn as much as I possibly can from each board that I'm on. So my expectation, and, you know, for my, for myself, is to try to attend every board meeting that I possibly can. Now, I understand, and hopefully other council members understand this too, life comes, life comes up, obligations, family obligations, what have you, but when I go to these boards and commissions, it's the board and commission, it's those board members and the commission members meeting. I don't try to interject into my meeting, I may have a question, but I don't try to interject a philosophy of, of, of myself or, or others. When I'm there as background information for those board members, so if they have a question regarding budget, I can, I can say, and I try to do very objectively, this is what I think council's looking at. Again, I would recommend that you go as often as you possibly can, it can be time-consuming. There was one year that I was, for a whole week straight, I went to board meetings on Monday, council Tuesday, board meeting, board meeting, board meeting, board meeting. It happens. So, choose and choose wisely, but I would advise you to, to pick well, attend, be there for those board members if they have questions, unless you're a voting member, and then, you know, be there for, be there as, as a liaison from the council to that board so that they have questions. You know, that's my philosophy as far as boards and commissions.
Thank you, Jim. Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Likewise, I try to attend as many meetings as possible, and when I am not able to attend, I usually let them know in advance, and I usually ask them if they have any questions or issues that I should be aware of or that they need help with, so I can help them even though I'm not physically there. So, it's just a courtesy to let them know if you're not, if you're not going to be there. And generally, I always try to follow up afterwards too, to see how the meeting went or what issues came up that they also may need help with.
Thank you. Councilmember Levison.
Yes, sometimes also the liaison position is doing a bit of community building as well, and we do have that role in the community in an informal, informal sense, and that happens informally frequently at, at board meetings. Plus, we do get some informal feedback on the direction that people view the city going in, and I think that that's helpful, so that's another good reason to go. And I don't think that there's an expectation by any board that you're going to attend all the time, because frequently, you know, it's happened that in March, when several of us go to Washington for those conferences, you know, we miss board meetings. And, you know, people go on vacation, and I don't think that any board would necessarily want to hold a council member hostage for not going on vacation to attend a board meeting. And so, you know, if you can, I guess it depends on the expectation of the board as well. I just knew that when we added NGLA to the list of boards and I volunteered to be liaison, it was really because I sat there as a neighborhood group leader for five years, listening to NGLA beg, year after year, for a council member to show up because they felt they had no connection with the governing body, plus we would be deciding on budget items for them, their $60,000 Public Improvement Fund proposals, and they thought that they needed somebody there that could help explain if there was a question or a concern over a project, whatever. So I think that there's that facilitation role that being there at the meetings when, for example, we take something up at council also from a board or commission, then there's that other level of explanation that we can all learn from each other, and that enables us to have that, that conversation when we make decisions. So, I would just, you know, I always shoot for 100%, and I don't make that all the time, and, but I think it's good to try to, to get there at least 75% of the time, and, and sometimes those, those boards don't even meet every single meeting that they're scheduled to meet. So, I always think that it depends on the individual board as well, and what their expectations are, and if you can meet those expectations early on and, and let them know that, so.
Councilmember Witt.
When I first got on council two years ago, I wasn't very savvy to, how to pick boards. I just, I, I like this and this and this, and that's the ones I want to be on, and I didn't really map it out and realize on the third week of the month, I will be gone Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And I, I counted it up, and if I were to make every single meeting, I would be gone 11 out of 20 weeknights. And I have to live with these people in my house after I'm off of council, and so I, I've, I've had to make some trade-offs, I'll go for, I'll go to my meeting, but I can only stay for an hour because I, you know, I have other obligations. And my, I think my recommendation would be to, when you get on a board, have a discussion with the board members, what are your expectations of me? Because I followed, unfortunately, Councilmember Santos on a board, and I did not do the things the same way that he did, and so, exactly, and they had an expectation of this, and I was doing this, so, no, no, your bar's over here, my bar's over here. Not a high bar. So, so do have a discussion with, with your board and, and understand what they want of you. And don't be gone every night in a week.
All right. Well, I guess that's the end of the discussion here.
So, look, it's still kind of general, but I think we have some direction we can, we can provide to board chairs, and that, one of those, one of the things we can suggest to them is that they also initiate a conversation with the board and the new council liaison about expectations, so that you're, both sides are clear when they start working with the board. Okay? Any other comments about participation? I mean, that was the other question, how much you participate on the boards.
So now is when we go down the list and...
Actually, I have one question.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also want to remind council members that when we have boards that, especially some of the external boards where we've got a main person and an alternate, that it's really good, especially if we have a voting position, to make sure that we have representation in evening on a board, because it, there could be an issue that comes up that evening, and I think that we have to be willing to, to do the team lifting when someone's not able to attend a board meeting. And also for the external boards, I, I want to note that some of them take far more time and commitment and work than others, and when we're selecting boards, I would ask people to consider that when we're doing appointments, because, for example, Councilmember Witt, I hope you don't mind, I use you as an example, to Dr. Cog, there's considerable, there's 45 minutes down in good weather, fighting traffic, and, you know, in bad weather, it's worse, and then the meeting goes on. I, I attended a meeting with Councilmember Witt and staff members when we needed extra people in the room, and, and it's quite a lengthy meeting, and I think we need to appreciate how much time Dr. Cog takes, and, and when we do the appointments, to, to maybe try to balance that out also, to acknowledge that and, and try to help people out if, if needed.
Mayor Coombs, if, if I could walk you through this matrix that you have now in front of you.
Just, just, for, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The only thing I wanted to add, as long as we're talking about Dr. Cog, is I would like to throw my hat in the ring to be the alternate for Dr. Cog.
I don't know.
I'm already down there.
Yeah.
The weather won't be a problem.
Bribery works. Okay. All right. Okay, so we'll, we'll look at that one, we get down to that one. I'd like to start with the internal boards first, if that's all right, and what I asked each of you to do was provide me with a list of the top five internal boards, the top five external boards. And I put those numbers on this matrix where there was only one person who expressed a desire on that board, I've added their name to the 2011 council assignment, that's actually 2011 because you're being appointed in 2011, it continues on for two years, basically. So for instance, under Airport Advisory Board, Councilmember Witt is the only one who expressed an interest in it, and so I put her name there, if there's anybody else who really wants it, now's your opportunity to speak up, but we have her down as that representative.
Go for it.
Okay, so the next one on the list is Art in Public Places, and as you noticed, that was a very popular one, we had three individuals, Bagley, Finley, and Levison, that all three wanted to serve on that. Generally, in the past, what we've done is have a brief discussion here, if you can't decide, then we vote, so. If you, all three still want it, I've got some blank sheets of paper I can give you, and you can vote that way, or we can make a motion, so.
Councilmember Levison first.
Yeah, actually, I have never applied for Art in Public Places or to be liaison for Museum Board, even though my background is in art, and I sort of would like to branch out and do something different, so if, I'm just, you know, maybe asking for, for some consideration on that, so, anyway.
Councilmember Finley.
You could take me off that one.
Mr. Bagley, Councilmember Bagley.
So it's, Councilmember Bagley, please.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, you can have it, Sarah.
Okay.
The next one was also popular, which is Asset Purporture Committee. This is a call as needed, so this is, has very little work associated with it, in fact, I'm not sure it's been called for a while, so, so all three of you, Samori, Santos, and Witt, do we want to vote for that, or do you want to fight it out, or?
I'm not giving it up. I won't have to.
Okay, I'll give it up. I'm giving mine up.
Okay. Okay, so that's between Santos and...
I'll give it up, that's fine.
Okay, Samori's got the...
The next board is Board of Environmental Affairs, and I've listed Santos there, he's the only one that has expressed an interest at this point. Okay, Cable Trust, Levison expressed interest, and there were two positions, and Finley, so I put both of those individuals down. Golf Course Advisory Board, Councilmember Finley. Historic Preservation, Councilmember Levison. Library, Councilmember Bagley. Then Long, Longmont Housing Authority, we have three folks, Samori, Santos, and Witt again, that expressed an interest. Any discussion?
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I'm, I'm in for that one.
Councilmember Samori.
I'll let Councilmember...
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, speaking out of turn. You may have it.
Go ahead. Okay, so Santos. Longmont Housing and Human Services, Bagley. Longmont Youth Council, no one expressed an interest in that particular board at this time.
Uh, I'll, I think there would be unanimous agreement that I am the most immature on council, therefore, I probably belong with the youth, unlike the fellow illiterates who did not ask to serve on the library board. So, yes, so I, I, I'll, I'll take that one enthusiastically.
Museum Advisory Board.
Excuse me, Councilmember Samori.
We let you have that one because they meet before 6:30.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I would also advise members of council who were coming from the 2009 council, 2009, 2010 council, to switch it up a little bit. I gave up most of my boards to learn new things, I mean, I, I've served on the museum board, the library board, transportation, switched it in the incoming 2009, and I'm switching them again. It, it's a great way to learn how, what goes on in the city as far as in boards and commissions and, and the inner workings of how the departments work as well.
Next board is Museum Advisory Board, and Councilmember Bagley and Finley have both expressed an interest in that one.
Councilmember Finley.
I actually will take my name off of that, and, um, I'll tell you why, because I want to be the alternate for Dr. Cog, and they meet the same night.
Okay.
Only one I really, really want is LAAC, so I'll take, I know, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so, but I'll do Museum.
And Neighborhood Group Leaders is Councilmember Levison, and Old Higher Fire Pension Board will be Mayor Coombs, that's one of those, right, there's another Old Higher Fire Pension Board that no one expressed, and you will, we'll do that? Okay.
All right.
Then the Old Higher Fire Police Pension Board has two positions also, Mayor Coombs is one of those.
They meet at the same time. Well, they meet together.
They meet together, so, yeah.
That would be, yeah. Okay. Parks and Recreation Board, Councilmember Finley. Still, still want that, right? Okay. Planning and Zoning Commission, we have two, Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Samori, who was your first choice for both of you for internal boards, so. You might want to check the board you've just been...
My, yeah, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just getting so excited here, it's like Christmas. Councilmember Samori, I understand that you want that, that's okay. I, I applied more than anything because someone distinguished should serve on that board, so, I will, I will, I will acquiesce.
Mayor Coombs. Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, plus, Councilmember Bagley, Planning and Zoning meets the same time as the Museum Board, third Wednesday, Museum meets at 6, Planning and Zoning meets at 7. No, I'm just saying, just, just, just in case.
Okay.
All right.
Senior Citizens Advisory Board, we have three folks interested in that, Councilmember Levison, Councilmember Santos, and Councilmember Witt.
Councilmember Witt.
I would really like the opportunity to work with the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. Transportation Advisory Board is Councilmember Witt. And the Water Board is Santos. Okay? Internal boards, that was easy. Now the list of external boards. There are fewer names than this particular one, starting with the Boulder County Consortium Cities Energy Task Force. Right now, there's a staff alternative, and if you, we don't have one in that position right now. They've gone to called meetings, so they aren't meeting very often. Certainly could put a staff person on that for called meetings if you want us to do that.
Councilmember Samori?
If it's called, I'll take it.
Okay.
When do they meet first?
It's a called meeting, so I don't know.
Usually when they call it, as their...
You know, I'm not sure. This, this particular, it was a task force, and so I'm not even sure that it will be called again. So, I couldn't get a firm, firm yes or no from them. They just said called meeting, so. The Boulder County Consortium, oh.
Councilmember Bagley first.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Since it's a called meeting, I'd be willing to put my name in too. So we, isn't there, oh, never mind, I'm looking at staff alternate, never mind. Alex, you still got that one.
Boulder County Consortium of Cities itself is not a called meeting. It's, it meets the first Wednesday of even-numbered month. So it meets in February, April, June, August, October, and December. And it meets on the first Wednesday of the month, 6:30. We need a vote, a council member and an alternate. And in the past, we've done it two ways. This last two years, it's been two council members serving those positions. Prior to that, it was a council member with a staff alternate as the voting member. So we can go back to that if you'd like. But I don't have any...
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would volunteer for that.
Is there another council member that's interested in that, or would you like to go back to?
Councilman Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was going to say that if nobody else wanted it, I'd do it too. Recently, a Boulder City Councilman told me that he liked Longmont because he gets fast food here. An opportunity to rub shoulders with our prestigious colleagues in Boulder would be most welcome. But Councilman Santos, if you want, if you want that, you can have it. I can be the alternate. I'll take the alternate.
One of the things I will do for all of you for next week is I will do you each a calendar to see whether there's any conflicts. And if there are conflicts, we may have to come back on a couple of these. So Boulder County Resource Conservation Advisory Board, we have just, we have both a council position, and we've used a staff alternate for the alternate in the past. But you can do either or. So we have a council position open on that one. It's the fourth Wednesday. Well, you know, and if we don't, if there's nobody at this point, we can have our staff alternate, which is Charles Camalides, fill that in for the time being and then revisit it. Yes?
I guess that's what we do.
Okay, we'll move on. Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee, I put Councilmember Levison down. She was just appointed by the council a couple of months ago. And Sand Resider is the staff alternate that we've done in the past. Okay? Colorado Rail Authority, there are actually three people interested in that position. Bagley, Finley, and Witt. Those are called meetings, so. So that leaves Finley?
That leaves Finley.
Okay. And they are called meetings, so I can't even tell you at this point.
Councilmember Finley, I haven't been called, so.
Oh, excuse me. Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That meeting, they have not called in two years. So, congratulations.
Okay. And Denver Regional Council of Governments, Councilmember Witt, and it sounds, and then Finley just volunteered for the alternate. Do you question?
Councilmember Levison?
Yes. Since we've, we've gotten in a situation where both the designated and alternate can't make Dr. Cog, could we do a second alternate too on the book so that we don't have to do a council, you know, a switch like we did when we knew people were going to be out of town, and we couldn't get an alternate there?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, I'm going to have to ask Gordon, because I know Dr. Cog is really a stickler about having a letter about who is the voting member and who is the alternate. So I don't know that they allow a second alternate.
And I can't answer that with definitive information. They are, they go by bylaws, and it very likely is that they will have a main person and an alternate, and then we have to do what we did before when we were going to miss somebody. But we will check on that.
We can, can we, we have to do that with a week's notice in between because we have to notice it and vote on it. So it can't be a last minute. So what hap, so in the case where, you know, we don't have our regular member or the alternate, then what do we do?
We would be without a vote at particular...
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Witt?
I only missed one meeting for Dr. Cog, and unfortunately, my alternate was not able to go. And I believe we ended up sending the mayor. We got that switched around so that the mayor could go. So at that time, so we had enough for a warning. And I don't know if I need to put this on here or not, but I also serve on the Metrovision Issues Committee, which is on the first Wednesday. It's not, it's like special, I don't know. It's not something we're always going to have. Do I need to notice that, or, I don't know.
Is that part of Dr. Cog?
It is part of Dr. Cog.
Okay.
I don't know if you need to put that officially on the calendar or what. That's okay.
I believe that as a member of Dr. Cog Board, you are eligible to be on the Metrovision Invict, and you'd be the only one probably that would be in position to do that.
Next board is El Comité. Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Levison have both expressed an interest in that, third Wednesday.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I love the Latinos here locally. I know that Councilmember Levison, however, loves that. I would be more than willing to participate along with her and support. However, the Museum Advisory Board meets at that same time. And so anything I can do to back her up, just let her know. However, it would probably be more appropriate if you take it.
Councilmember Levison?
And actually, I'd like to make a correction. El Comité has switched their meets the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Councilmember Bagley also has youth council, which meets fourth Wednesday of the month.
Took away my thunder.
Okay. I turn the five quarter mayor's group with, of course, Mayor Coombs, Livwell, Longmont Stern Committee, Levison. Longmont Area Economic Council, one of the appointments is generally the mayor, so we have Mayor Coombs down there. The other position, both Bagley and Santos have expressed it as their number one interest, so.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it's always, seeing the last several councils, even before, it's been traditionally that the Mayor Protem is also a member of that board. So, but that doesn't stop members of council, like Councilmember Samori, who goes to the LAEC board meetings as well quite often, from attending. We, the LAEC sends the board packets out to all members of council and county commissioners. So, Councilmember Bagley, if you'd like to attend, you can attend.
Councilmember Bagley?
A man I look up to, who supported me during my campaign, who's a wonderful mentor, once said, "You'll notice that I switched it all up. I'm applying for new boards. It's a great way to learn how things work." I respect this man. I don't remember right off the top of my head who it was. Oh, wait, it was you, Councilmember Santos. I'd really like to serve on this board.
I guess I was going to put in my two cents, but I guess I won't now, so.
I'll show up.
LAEC, I mean, sorry, Longmont Visitors Association, Councilmember Samori. Okay. The Longmont Downtown Development Authority, we have four folks interested in that. Also the fourth Wednesday of the month, but it's at 4:15 in the afternoon. So Bagley, Finley, Samori, and Santos. I do have ballots.
Councilmember Bagley?
I really want this one to, no, just kidding. I'm going to step aside on this one. Looks like a fun board, though.
It is fun. I've served on that board. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would step aside as well.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Samori, what have you done for me lately?
Nothing. I'll remain that way.
I'd like to serve on this board.
Okay. And you would like to serve on this board?
Well, I have a lot of history on that board, and we have three major projects going on there right now that I'd like to make sure they get completed. As Mr. Santos has said before, anybody can, anybody can attend those meetings. They're open to the public, and he's definitely a member of the public.
So we, we can take a vote. I think we'll just take ballots and vote on these. If you're going to give it, just, okay. Okay. Longmont Sister Cities Association, both Finley and Witt have expressed interest in that one.
Councilmember Witt?
How badly do you want that? Really, really badly?
I really can't.
Okay, I'll give it to you.
Metro Mayor's Caucus, of course, will be Mayor Coombs. Multicultural Steering, Strategic Plan Steering Committee, both Councilmember Bagley and Councilmember Levison again have expressed interest. That's a noon meeting on the second Monday.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Unfortunately, it meets at the same time as LAEC. So I was hoping to get either El Comité or that one, but I will continue. That's all right, kid. I feel the love. I'm going to show up there and feel loved now. But I will, anything I can do to support or help, okay?
North Area Transportation Alliance Steering Committee, Santos and Witt. Those are quarterly meetings.
Councilmember Witt?
You know what? I work with these people. I work with these people on Dr. Cog. I know these people. These people know me. These are my people. I have relationships with these people. All politics is relational. I know these people.
But if you need an alternate, let me know. Because Phil Greenwall, I give a lot very well.
And then Phil Greenwall is the staff alternate on this. Okay. North St. Green's Corridor Study Group, Santos has that one. That's a called meeting. Northwest Rail Corridor Governments Committee, both Finley and Levison have expressed interest in that. That's a called meeting.
Councilmember Levison?
I've been working a little bit on this issue with the stationary master plan, so I think it would be a good idea to do it. And I don't think we've had a meeting. I need one of those where it's a called meeting that never meets. So everybody else seems to have gotten one of those, and I would like to have one too.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would, I would let you have that one. That River Power Authority is Mayor Coombs. The Transit Alliance Management Committee, both Finley and Levison have expressed interest in that one as well. And that is a fourth Thursday meeting. Oh, it's fourth Thursday in March, June, September, and something else.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday and December.
Second Thursday and December, yeah.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this is another one of those meetings where I actually met with the executive director, and I get their mailings, but it, it appears that they don't have really any meetings anymore. They just have social events. And most of them are in downtown Denver on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And you're down there on Thursdays, probably. So if that's something you'd be interested in doing...
Yep, okay.
US Mayors and Commissioners Coalition is Mayor Coombs. And then we have US 36 Commuting Solutions Steering Committee, second Tuesday at 7:30 a.m. That's in Brimfield, the event center.
I would love to have this one.
Councilmember Witt?
This, this fits in my, my hand of transportation. All right. This is a good one. This is a really fun one. What, what would you give me? Oh, wow.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would, I would like to just say a big nod of the head and thank you to Councilmember Santos for all that you do for our city. And, and I just want to say thank you.
So the last board is Wendy Gap, and Santos was the only one that expressed an interest in that particular one. So, and it goes well with the water board. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm really surprised you did that.
Next is our final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak at the council at this time?
Greetings. What an interesting meeting. I, Strider Benston, I would just, a couple of comments. I thought the discussion on the question of board members, if they move out of the city, I thought it went quite well but was somewhat redundant because some of the same points got mentioned multiple times. But just a little more picture on it, on the Longmont Election Committee, we had a member who had to move out of the city to follow his job as far as Berthold. And he did resign. And because of the amount of time left on the committee and the fact that the committee was likely to be dissolved, which it was, we just moved an alternate up to that position. But I think for the future, you might consider if somebody leaves right toward the end of their term, you know, that maybe, you know, you could have a six-month hiatus or something like that rather than having to jockey somebody new into a position. But I thought the discussion went well. It just was a bit, a bit redundant. I, Mayor Protem Santos and I don't agree on everything, as is probably pretty well-known, but I thought he did an excellent job of pointing out one particular on that number two on the sustainable, integrated sustainable plan, especially dealing with the language where it said, and I paraphrase slightly, "For Longmont to thrive, it is crucial that all citizens' basic needs be met." You were absolutely on target, on target there, that that is not the point of government, to make sure that all the needs are met. But it is very important, and I thought it was well-put, to put forth that as, as a goal, as a target. But that is, you know, government's job is to facilitate, not to cause. And I thought that was well-done. Although unfortunate on your own statement, kill sustainability, I hope that was overstated. I think the word was in there too often, and I agree. Sometimes that word is very... much overused, but one of the best things we've ever had here in Longmont was, uh, four or five years ago, the Sustainable Harvest Fair, and I hope that we can, uh, have those kinds of events in the future, both as educationals and as, uh, uh, policy footholds, so, thank you.
Kay, this is your 2199 Creekside Drive. As I understood it this evening, you was, you stayed with the policy that boards, uh, those serving on boards and commissions must be residents of Longmont and be registered voters for one year in Longmont, one year in both cases. Uh, I would like to bring off the subject, I, I, I think that our, uh, the requirements for our council members should be equally as, as stringent as the count, requirements for our boards and commissions. In this last election, we had a candidate who only registered to vote in Longmont in August before the election was held. Uh, I think that, apart from the fact that one could question the person's commitment to the city if they had not voted in past Longmont's elections, I think it should also be a requirement for the council members, that they be a registered, registered voter for one year in the city before they're allowed to run for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council comments, are there any council comments at this point? Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. I, recently, my, um, youngest boy wa, took an interest in the civilian air patrol, and we went a couple of times and found out that they're having their 70th anniversary on December 7th, and they were interested in having a proclamation. I reached out to them and just heard back last night that, yes, indeed, they would like to have a proclamation. Our agenda has already been distributed to us, and so I need to make a motion that we include this proclamation to the civilian air patrol for next week. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley.
Oh. Let's go ahead and vote. Passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Levison.
You were on first, do you wanna go, Bonnie? Couple of things, um, first of all, um, you know, it's with breathless anticipation that I look forward to riding on a very large bucket truck with all of you, um, and since Councilmember Witt did not bring up the decoration, the potential decorating theme, I would encourage people to, uh, coordinate with Councilmember Witt about our potential to decorate together, and we got that memo, um, through the email, um, to reserve some time on, uh, the ninth of, uh, of, uh, December. The other, um, item I'd like to bring up is, we, um, are rapidly approaching, um, our first meetings in January, and it's been a, um, a new tradition in the city that we have a, um, basically, uh, open forum, one of the first meetings in January, and I would like to move that we, um, look at January 10th as being our open forum, um, that would be the second, um, and that, the second meeting of the month is usually a study session, is it, or am I incorrect?
Uh, no, Mayor, the second and fourth are the ones that are your regular meetings, and so if you do that, uh, you would end up needing to change the, uh, regular meeting.
And I, I guess I would suggest looking at the, um, 10th, or, um, or maybe the, even the 17th, um, uh, just so that we get good attendance, I think that, um, so close to the new year, having it on the 3rd, um, people will not be back in the swing of things yet, so, um, I, I would like to, uh, maybe recommend we do it on, on the 10th, so we maybe kick the year off very strongly with, um, some good feeling and, um, input from citizens on, uh, what they would like to see and share ideas and, and hopes and dreams for the coming year with us, and that we can welcome people to participate. So I would like to have it, um, on the 10th, but I, I would also like input from other council.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, we had, I believe, last, this last year, we had all of fifteen people, we were out of here about 7:20. We, we were out very early, I remember that, i- if I'm not mistaken, it was either 2010 or 2011, I don't remember a big crowd of folks.
Mayor, uh, if I remember correctly, our January session has been well-attended, uh, the, the one year we tried a mid-year sometime in July, and it was, uh, sparsely attended.
I, I would think this would be better done around the budget time. With everything that is potentially coming forward, um, regarding oil and gas drilling and, and things of that nature, you know, I, I, I am, am one that, you know, I, whether I agree with a person or I disagree with a person, you have three minutes and you can state whatever you need to state. I, I'm not interested in doing a, an open forum in January at all.
Councilmember Levison.
Well, you know, I think that, um, as been pointed out already, um, having it, um, during the time where we haven't even yet received the budget in July, no one knows to give us any comment or direction on the budget because we actually don't have the budget in hand yet, um, and there would be nothing to comment on. Um, I, I really think that, um, in the spirit of things, if, if your concern is that, uh, Councilmember Santos, that we're going to have, um, a, a lot of, um, uh, comments specifically on one hot topic, I think that the first several years have, um, shown that, that people don't stick on one topic, there are different people that show up to the open forum than show up any other time of the year, and, um, uh, you know, I, I believe that we could, uh, strike a positive chord and, and, uh, with whatever the press release is, and really give the people, um, of the city an opportunity to do this, uh, this really, um, traditional, if you, uh, you're looking at it from the kind of New England Town Hall, it's the foundation of, of, uh, the early strains of democracy in, in our country, that this matches that kind of feeling, and gives people an opportunity to, um, uh, come out for an evening of, um, throwing away the, the Trinitron and, and, uh, and being less intimidating, and we do hear different things that evening, and I think that the public would respect that, and, um, we could, um, encourage that, uh, that kind of demeanor as we always do. So I don't, I don't really think it's going to be, um, a problem, and, uh, it's been, I think, uh, well-accepted, um, now, uh, four full years we've done it, um, and I think that, that it would be nice to continue, so I was hoping that the rest of the council would support that.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, well, I didn't hear a second. And the other thing is, is that it has not been well-attended, and I remember when council, new members of council came in in 2008, and this was done, it was very well-attended, first time it had ever been done. Um, we don't live in New England, we live in the state of Colorado. Um, we have many avenues that public can, uh, can come to us and speak to us, whether it's at boards and commissions, whether it's with coffee with council, um, uh, whether it's a council meeting and study sessions. I don't see the need, it was something that was done four years ago when new members of council came on, it's run its course.
Councilmember Witt.
Um, it wasn't four years ago, 'cause I attended one, and I've only been on council time, hey, do you know what, can we extend this meeting, I move that we extend this meeting to the end of council comments.
Alright, let's vote. I know we already have one, but we gotta do this too. Okay, the, the meeting is gonna be extended. It, it passes, uh, five to two with, uh, Bagley and, uh, Finley abstaining.
Voting no.
Oh. I'm abstaining, but, but, voting no.
Councilmember Witt.
I was going to just gently remind, uh, Mayor Protem that it was done two years ago, 'cause I, I remember being.
Started four years ago.
Okay, and it was very well-attended, and you know what? All those little Boy Scouts that have to check things off for citizenship in the community, this is a great time for them to come and get that checked off, and January is a great time to do it, July is not a great time because people are on vacation, so I am in full support of doing that.
Alright, let's vote. What?
I thought we ended that when we got rid of two members of council.
Okay. Okay, it passes six to one.
Mayor Coombs?
Yes.
Let me just let you know that staff will be bringing back, uh, uh, a motion for you guys to change your regular meetings in January, because that is normally a regular meeting, so we'll have to change that next month.
Okay. Well, I, I guess, uh, under Mayor's remarks, I'd like to thank the council for, uh, working so well together and horse trading on all those boards, I mean, what teamwork, especially, well, all of you did, did a great job, um, I'd also, not to use the word sustainability, but I'd be fine if we turned the temperature down two degrees a year. But, uh, I guess that's, that's it for me, so, uh, the next is, uh, City Manager, do you have any additional remarks?
Mayor, uh, Sandy's gonna come up and make a remark, and before she gets here, a reminder that, uh, next week, you have a pre-session at 5:30 on retail recruitment in the study session room.
With dinner. Uh, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant to the City Manager, I just have a couple scheduling things I just wanted to work out with you, one was the open forum, one is, uh, you saw it two times for the decoration of the float, um, LPC folks show up at seven, so they're gonna start at seven, they would like for you to come at eight, they'd like a little time to get the truck out and get everything ready, so they would like for you to come at eight, so that's why the discrepancy, and if you have specific things that you'd like on the float, please contact Justin, because he will be doing all of that shopping ahead of you guys being there, so please talk to him, um, around that, so that he knows what he should be doing, um, if it's different than what they were, you know, buying, I think they're just buying lots and lots of lights, I'm sure LED, very good lights. And then the other piece was, um, as you heard earlier, we had set January 20th as your team-building piece, we did have one member of council that couldn't make the dinner, so we were planning to move it anyway, and then found out about the city manager interviews during the day. So out of that whole list of dates that I gave you, the only date left right now is February 4th, which is a Saturday. So if you are good with February 4th, I would love to set that today, if not, I'd be happy to set you more, more times in February, because at this point, all your January times had conflicts, so if you are, I see at least one thumbs up, if you are, need everybody to make sure that they're able to be there for the dinner and for the, for the team-building. February 4th, it's a Saturday.
Can I tell you something?
Sure.
Alexara.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just wanna remind council members that I think February 3rd is gonna be the all-day orientation at CML.
It is, it is.
So that would mean back-to-back full days for you guys for, um, Friday and Saturday, so I just wanted to remind you, and I, to be honest with you, I think the CML, um, from my experience, the CML orientation is, is, um, really, really important to attend, it gives you a lot of, um, big-picture things, so, I, I just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, so, so I think, Councilmember Finley, I think you're planning to attend that piece, right, are you okay with doing Friday, Saturday? Uh, Saturday, uh, you know, just based on the team-building, what we're thinking is probably like a 10 to 3 or a 10 to 4 type of thing, um, we'll bring back some proposals for team-building, what that may look like, as well as we'll do a work-plan update from staff, and then, uh, a dinner that includes staff, so the team-building, uh, is council, with of course, public, it's an open meeting, um, and then the, we'll do work-plan, just to make sure everyone understands where we are on the work-plan, and then we'll do the dinner after that for staff and for council, so that's the plan at this point for that. And then we're working on the legislative dinner, we're just waiting on Senator Schaefer to give us his schedule, so we're either looking at Wednesday, uh, January 18th, or Thursday, the week before, January 12th, so those are the two dates we're looking at right now, would you like me to put those in your calendar to hold them right now until we can, get confirmation from Senator Schaefer?
Sure.
Okay. Great. And that's all. Thank you.
That's all I have.
City Attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.